One minute to get myself set up.
This is the roll call for the January eleventh, twenty twenty-two city council work session. Roll call, the honorable council, council member, the honorable. Mayor.
Mayor.
Present.
The honorable Catherine F. Rawe, District one.
Present.
The honorable. The honorable Helen Z. Williams, District three. The honorable J. C. Sebastian, District four.
Present.
Present, and I hear an echo. Can someone please mute their phone?
I, I, I believe that's coming out of the mayor's, uh, connection, but it looks like it's gone now. Okay. The honorable Corey A. Reeves, District five.
Accountant four.
The honorable Natasha Williams, District six.
Present.
The honorable Mark Baker, District seven.
Present.
Mister Mayor, you have a call.
It appears he stepped away.
Mister Mayor?
No, I'm here. Can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Can you see me?
We cannot see you.
Can you see me now? Could we take off the, uh, could we just have the participant view? Could we hold the agenda for me? Thank you so much. That way I can see myself. Um, we're going to get started. I just wanted to, uh, say a few quick things. We are here, as you can see, I am here at my new apartment in Camelot and one of the things that I would like to do is make sure, I want to reinstitute the practice of allowing public comment, uh, I'm sorry, uh, we were gonna have public comment at all the meetings, but I want to reinstitute the practice of council comments. We got away from that somehow, and I want to make sure that uh, at the end of every meeting, including this meeting, that council members do have the opportunity to let people know about whatever it is that you have planned in your communities in the coming days. Um, I am going to be talking during my public comment about uh, some things that I have going on here in Camelot, uh, for King Day weekend. And so with that, we are going to go ahead and get started with this meeting. Uh, Mister Clerk, would you sound the first item, please?
The next item is invocation.
Uh, is our city chaplain on the line?
Yes, we're present, Mayor. Let us pray. Dear God, we praise you for your goodness, and we thank you for bringing us together on this eleventh day of the new year. God, we are grateful for your abiding generosity which has blessed us and taught us how to be generous to each other. Life has taught us that we are all linked together in word, action, and deed. And so today in our hearts, we remember the words and action and deeds of our very own Jimmy Hood, one of our family members of the great city of South Fulton. Not only do we remember our family, but his family as well, oh God. We ask you to comfort them and strengthen them and use the strength and energy that we have as a city to empower them to know that we love them as we loved him. Now, God, for this meeting, we ask for blessings to fall upon our merit and, and our council that they may have the wisdom and the knowledge that you have given all of us to govern this city as they do. So we thank you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Thank you. Uh, Clerk, would you please go ahead and sound the first item?
Uh, the next item are the monthly reports. Uh, the first one is finance report.
I wanna, uh, before we begin, I wanna just, uh, welcome, uh, introduce to some uh, the new finance manager for, uh, the city of South Fulton.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, um, to the council members. It is my pleasure to present to you my, uh, financial report for the city of South Fulton. And I'll be presenting this report as of, uh, November the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. We'll go to the next slide. And so in, in keeping with the same format that Ms., um, Brynbrary has, uh, presented to the city over the many months, about a year that she said, I want to keep in that same format, so just kind of going through here a summary of the revenues for the city of South Fulton for November the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. We can see where we're still collecting with about eighty-one percent on our property tax and then about ninety-nine percent on our other taxes, which of course include our, um, insurance premium tax. So overall, the revenue collection is at forty-seven, um, percent. Um, looking at the, the budget of, uh, ninety-one point five million versus what we've collected year-to-date of, uh, forty-three, um, million here. Next slide. So here we have a general summary of our expenditures here, um, looking at the different departments and all the way down to our, um, Main Street, Old National there, we can see that expenditures are trending at about eight percent. And this is over a budget of ninety-one million, ninety-one point five million versus we've already spent seven point, uh, seven percent here almost, so eight percent of revenues, um, expenditures at the end of November thirtieth. We'll move to the next slide. And here on this slide, we're going to look at, um, general fund. This is our year-to-date tax revenue. So as of twenty twenty-one, uh, the collection rate is, we're still recognizing a good collection here at eighty-two point, uh, two percent, which is almost five shy of about sixteen point percent to meet what we've actually collected overall for fiscal year twenty collection rate, which we show was a ninety-eight point five percent here. Move to the next. And then here, this is going to be our general fund, um, year-to-date loss revenue. And o- over the time, this time period last year, we're at about twenty-seven point twenty-four, uh, percent. So really trending, still trending good, a little bit on that with our loss revenue. Go to the next slide. And then here, this is going to show our general fund year-to-date T. S. Gloss revenues. And, um, so over this, um, time period here, November, we, over last year time period, we're at sixteen point, uh, four percent over collection over November of, uh, thirtieth of twenty twenty. Go to the next slide. And then this here shows our expenditure, summary of expenditures by different, um, department, and this is just in a uh, graph, bar graph, chart, bar chart here for, so this will change over time period as we keep moving, expenditures go up. And we can see where, of course, uh, police administration, which is always the, the norm, is, you know, kind of spent a little bit more than any of the other departments. So we'll go to the next. And so this slide here is just a summary of our revenues and expenditures, so for the month ending on November thirtieth. And so this is a comparison between a budget, uh, and a year-to-date. So we have our revenues at the top, and then we show our expenditures, uh, at the bottom. This is this slide. And this here just shows what our cash account balances, um, are at the end of, uh, November. And on this particular slide, I just want to bring attention to the, the bottom account, which is the savings, just to kind of say that we will be taking a look at this, um, account here. And this is the city's saving account. Um, prior to me coming on board, Ms. Brer had already started a process of potentially moving this money from a regular savings account to where the city was losing approximately about fifteen thousand dollars a year in interest revenue, so looking at the potential of moving it out of a savings account and moving it into a Georgia Fund One account, which is getting a little bit more, uh, interest if the city move it out of a regular savings account. So that will potentially be coming back for you at a later date to request to move that money. Uh, move to the next slide. And here we have our confiscated asset report. As of November, still no activity in this particular fund, so we'll keep a watch on this to see if any funds come in within our confiscated, uh, asset account for the city. And so that concludes my monthly financial report as of November the thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. And like I said, I would just like to publicly thank Ms. Rachel Brinberry for all her help and and getting the city to where they are and sort of helping me to get up to speed if I've been here one month. If anyone have any questions.
Okay, I see Dr. Raul in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I saw on our first projections of revenue, um, we still have the IGA with the city of Atlanta, uh, for this fiscal year, and we're not anticipating any revenue. Uh, because now there is no area that's in the city of Atlanta, correct? And I think it's budgeted at, I think I saw right at six hundred and eighty thousand.
Right, you're going to pick up to eighty thousand. And, uh, I will definitely check that and get that into order just to verify for you.
Yeah, I think it was a, it might have been a very first slide or second slide.
Yes.
Yes, that one. So that stood out as well as, um, our property taxes, which they're off about six million dollars from uh, what was budgeted, and we're now going into a nu- new year. Is that correct? So this is, this would have been money that we would have anticipated through this calendar year? Uh, what, when we just closed out, is that correct? Or is this from October first to September thirtieth of twenty twenty-two?
Yeah, this is actually September the first of twenty twenty-one up until the end of November twenty twenty-one. So we still have, you know, December up to this time here, so we're going to add some more property tax collections to this number.
Do you think it will get us up to the thirty-three million?
Yes, because just looking at the, the chart and looking at the collection rate here, we're already at about eighty-two percent. Overall, the city has had a real good property tax collection rate, um, up in the ninety-eight, ninety-nine percent range, so I anticipate that it will still keep up the same for you.
Okay, and then I saw that, so the IGA with the city of Atlanta is still in effect, we just haven't gotten any payments as of yet. Is that correct, based on what you say? Okay. Okay. Thank you, those were my only two questions.
All right, I see Councilwoman Willis in the queue. Mayor Proten, Willis, in the queue.
Thank you. Um, a couple of questions. Um, the, when do we anticipate to get that revenue from the city of Atlanta? I recall last year we had to actually, um, reach out to the CFO of the city of Atlanta because the depa- the payment was delayed.
And that, I made a, a note of that, and I will make sure I follow up tomorrow and check on that and definitely get you a definite, um, answer so that we are not at the end of the fiscal year trying to hunt this money down.
Okay. Um, secondly, when will we start seeing, um, or anticipating revenue from the Fulton Industrial, uh, property tax, uh, the annexation into the city? When will we see that or recognize that?
And from our history with, with property tax, because, um, I believe that area was annexed in last year, correct, in twenty twenty-one? So normally it comes in within this particular fiscal year, well, not this fiscal year, but when the bill-out takes place for twenty twenty-two. So they always look at the parcels that are on the digest as of twelve thirty-one, so these parcels would be on the digest for the city limit of the city of South Fulton, so that collection is going to fall in fiscal year twenty-three.
Okay, thank you. And then my last question is, um, asset forfeiture, the last slide that you showed. So currently for confiscated funds, we show two hundred and forty-six thousand, and that is in our bank, um, with no expenses or anything tied to it?
That is correct. And, and from history, it's normally tied to the police department, so I definitely will follow up with them just to kind of see what is, what's, what's the norm? When do they expect to utilize those funds that are available there?
And I said, this was my last question, but this is really my last question. Uh, when will we start seeing the accounting from American Rescue Funds?
And that one, I'm going to take a look at it because from what Ms. Kelly informed me, we should be expecting some of that money to, to come in or some of that, some of the expenditure, so.
Well, we, we already have, we already have a partial part of that money, but I would like to see the financials around that.
Okay, all right. I will work on getting that and try to have that ready for the, the next financial report.
Thank you.
Let me just check the queue. There doesn't seem to be any other council members with questions or comments. I do have a, uh, comment slash question. Read this later, Slayton Dixon. Um, we had some discussion in our, uh, and previous mayor's meetings around, uh, the possibility of late tax payments due to the pandemic. There have been, you know, um, in twenty twenty, we, we did see that, and there were some allowances made. Have you heard anything? Uh, and I would ask for you to just keep an eye on that. Want to respond to that?
All right, I definitely will because I have some, some information I'm working on with the, the county tax commissioner, um, as well. So I will definitely add this to the list of, of items that we're working on.
Thank you. But as of now, there is no, there is no, uh, special, those of you all who haven't paid your property taxes, there is no, uh, uh, late payment plan, uh, as of now, but it is something that we just want to look at. I'm going to record Dr. Raul. Do you have your hand up, Dr. Raul?
Yes, one, one more question. Um, as you, uh, mentioned, um, Ms. Layton, you're working with the tax commissioner. Will you also ensure that for those blighted properties who have, um, kept their properties in an extended state of blight, that they have, they comply with our municipal ordinance for, uh, additional penalty for failure to bring their property into compliance? Thank you.
All right, uh, sound the next item, Mister Clerk.
I'm sorry, the, the next item is the city manager's report.
Madam City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor Kalie. Good evening to you. Good evening, council members, um, citizens and staff. Tammy St. La Jones, your city manager. The first thing I wanted to go over, um, on January the ninth, I provided to the council a list of administrative actions, uh, that have been completed or in progress uh, by the staff so we can ensure a smooth transition for our newly elected officials. And as your city manager, it's important to me, uh, that staff, that we lay the groundwork, you know, for the mayor and the council member's success and also the success of our city. And I'm, uh, happy to, uh, just provide you a brief report on those actions. And again, the memo went out to you, so hopefully you've had a chance to see it, or if not, if you will eventually take a look at that. But those things that we've completed, um, you know, we held a two-day comprehensive orientation training for our newly elected officials that was held on December twentieth and December twenty-second. Uh, we have full participation from our elected officials, uh, our newly elected, and also from our city departments. Um, you have also been provided from our city clerk's office a comprehensive binder uh, of information that contains our ordinances, our resolutions, policies, and procedures. Um, so I would ask that you please take a look at that. Um, of course, you know, again, I want to thank our staff who planned and implemented the January fourth swearing-in ceremony at City Hall. Um, other action items that we are in the process of doing, um, I had mentioned, uh, during the orientation that it may be a good idea as we look at the possibilities of having some splosted funds for our upcoming parks master plan. You know, looking at doing, uh, some site visits to some other cities that you splosted. Um, I would also, you know, like to plan site visits for, you know, our elected officials to, uh, get an update on some of our city facilities that we're currently doing some renovation projects. Um, you know, those projects are being funded by our CIP and IURA funds. Um, of course, the staff, we've been, you know, assisting with advertising and hiring uh, office staff for our newly elected officials, and then, of course, our finance department uh, will be setting up an opportunity for you all to review your approved fiscal twenty-two operating budgets. So please be on the lookout for any emails from our staff. Um, I want to take this opportunity to, um, announce that we've selected Ms. Diane Dixon to serve as our court administrator. Uh, Ms. Dixon recently served as the court administrator for Clayton County Magistrate Court and comes to us with extensive experience overseeing court operations. Um, she started on January the tenth, so we're glad to have her aboard. Um, I also want to announce that, um, our interim community development director, um, is Ms. Rebecca Kiefer. Uh, Ms. Kiefer is a certified planner with over twelve years of experience in zoning code development and administration, community planning, master planning, and project administration. Um, she served in other, uh, she served as the deputy or interim, interim director at other municipalities, and she will be assisting us until we fill our permanent, uh, director position in community development. Um, I wanted to make you aware, of course, which the, the, the elected officials know, but the public, uh, that City Hall and our other facilities did reopen on Monday, January the tenth. And out of an abundance of caution and to ensure the safety of our employees and our visitors, you know, we have asked all of our staff, whether they are vaccinated or unvaccinated, uh, to, uh, submit a, a Co- a COVID-nineteen test before returning to work. Um, you know, those individuals, you know, have, who have gotten a negative test result were allowed to enter the building. We do have some employees, of course, you know, in the, in the age that we're in, in this pandemic, who uh, tested positive, so, uh, we are working with them where we can to continue teleworking um, until they, and of course, do the proper, uh, quarantining. And then, you know, of course, asking them to submit a negative test before they return to the building. So I would ask you to please, you know, be patient with us. You know, as COVID is affecting, you know, our workplace, just like it is other, uh, workplaces across the country, and we will continue to do our very best to serve our, um, businesses and our residents. Um, in December of twenty twenty-one, the city, we submitted the application for, uh, the first responders' thousand-dollar bonus that's being, uh, given out by the governor's office. We are still waiting on approval of our application. But as soon as we get those funds, we will be distributing those to all of our eligible employees. I know I've gotten some information that other cities have distributed theirs, but we have done everything that we were supposed to do, and we're just waiting um, until we get the, uh, funds at the city, and then we will be giving those out immediately. Um, I wanted to let you know that I'm working with Chief Chad Jones, um, to get some home test kits so we can distribute those within our community. Um, from my understanding, that is an eligible use of our American Rescue Plan money. Uh, so Chief Jones is assisting me, and we will continue to communicate to the council uh, when those test kits arrive. I, I do understand that it takes a few weeks, uh, but as soon as we get those, we will let you know so we can start distributing those, uh, to those who need them. And then the last thing, I just want to just remind the public, city offices will be closed on Monday, January the seventeenth, in observance of Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Holliday. And Mayor Kalie, that concludes my, uh, monthly report for today. At this time, I'll take any questions.
All right, I'm going to start with Dr. Raul.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, City Manager Jones, um, can you, is it possible for you to provide a report on how we, uh, spent the first half of our American Rescue, um, allocation? Um, I know we get it in two parts, but I know there have been some questions, um, that have been raised by constituents and in the effort to be transparent in the use of those funds, I think it would be helpful if we could have something that's posted, um, on the city's webh- website to just deal with those funds in particular?
Yes, ma'am, we can do that. And, you know, we really haven't spent much other than when we did our turkey giveaway um, back in November, but yes, we can certainly provide some information, and it's important to me that, you know, we're always doing what we're supposed to do with that federal money that's been given to us. So I have no problem being as transparent as possible on, uh, how we are using it.
Thank you for that. And, and while, um, we are talking about AR, I think a summary, uh, report for the CARES Act money, our first allocation of money will be available. I know there's some information that's available on the website, but, uh, maybe something that could be, you know, just in a PDF form, so if we can disseminate to our, um, constituents, that would be ideal.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right, I see Councilwoman Gums in the queue.
Thank you for recognizing me. Um, quick question, City Manager. And I don't know if you mentioned this, um, what are the status on the, using the CARES Act money or the, um, American Rescue Funds for, uh, I guess, the pandemic reimbursement for mortgage or rental assistance?
Actually, so, so the, so the, the. Actually, so the, so the, we are working, actually, I think I just got a email from our staff on this, but we are still trying to work with a vendor. Because it's my understanding, I believe we have to do an RFP. We did that the first time for a vendor. And I'm saying that because when we are trying to find a vendor to distribute our food insecurity funds, we had to do an RFP. And if I am not mistaken, I believe we're going to have to do that again for the vendor to do the rental and mortgage assistance.
Okay, is there any intention on the timeline at all when it gets started, maybe?
I honestly don't have a timeline for you right now, but I will try to get that to you as soon as possible. And I will send something out to the council, and then I will make sure I try to get an update for my monthly report for next month as well. Because I know that people are in need of those funds, and we really do want to try to get them out as soon as possible. And as it's been reported, you know, we got our first allocation of American Rescue Plan money. We got thirteen, eleven point three million. We got the first allocation, and then our second allocation is due to us in May of 2022.
Okay, okay. All right, I'll forward to that information. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
All right, and then we have Mayor Pro Tim Willis.
Thank you for recognizing me, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. For the bonuses, public safety, that was a resolution that I did bring forth. And the council did approve unanimously for those funds to be distributed once it is approved. The, I would like to ask you, Ms. Sattler Jones, to work with Chief Jones and Chief Meadows to send out communication to employees. Because I've noticed on a couple of social media sites, some employees are under the impression that we have received those funds and we have not dispersed them to them. Specifically, I saw one employee stating that you all got money from the government, but you all have not paid us. And that is not the case from what you just reported. And so I really, communication is key. And our public safety, I mean, they are ride or die. When we are running away from trouble, they are running to the trouble. And so we definitely want to make sure they're getting what's due to them. And we definitely do not want them to think that we are in possession of any funds that have not distributed. So if you could send out some communication to Chief and Meadows and Chief Jones so that they can communicate that with their staff, I would greatly appreciate that.
Yes, ma'am, we can do that. And again, I want to assure any of our public safety employees who would be eligible for these funds that we are not holding anything. As soon as we get it from the state, we will distribute it to you. Because Councilmember Willis, as you just mentioned, I mean, these are people who are out, you know, in jobs risking their lives for our community. And we would certainly not do that and hold any money from them. So as soon as we get it, we will send it out. But I think that's an excellent idea. And I will get with the chiefs so we can get some communication out to our public safety employees.
Thank you. My next question is, can you give us a little bit more insight of what's going on around the permitting process? Because I am getting several complaints from people who are saying that they have applied for permits and they have not, they're not getting, they're not being responded to, they're not getting via email, or they're not being responded to via phone. So can you please give us an update on where we are with staffing? Or why there is such a slow response relative to the permitting process?
Yeah, so I really hate to put Ms. Kiefer on the spot. But Rebecca, if you don't mind, because this is something we talk about pretty much every day. Can you give the council just a brief understanding of where we are and next steps that we are doing to try to address the delays? Or, you know, ability for, you know, individuals to get their permits? So if you don't mind doing that for me, please.
Absolutely, yes. Thank you, everyone, for having me here tonight. So as an update on that, we recognize there is a pretty substantial backlog. And so that is our most immediate priority, is to get those permits in and processed. We've got a team of folks working on getting through those so that we can be behind the backlog. Hopefully, I would say by the end of this month and be processing them under a much more, you know, deliberate and predictable time period. We're looking at maybe ten business days after we get out from this backlog. Right now, I am working with a lot of members of the public and applicants to be able to communicate that plan and then also get status updates, address different questions and concerns. So that's really what we're working toward is triaging those permits and open records requests. And then we'll go ahead and do an assessment of the overall process and look at efficiencies and improvements that we can make to the overall workflow. Right now, we are, we've been hit not only with some of the, you know, what we've known to be the reduced staffing, but then also just in the past week or so, a couple of unexpected absences. So we're also working through those, but really trying to work through, you know, that backlog. So if there's anybody, I'm happy to, you know, look up statuses and help get some things moving if you guys want to send anything specifically to me. I'm happy to take those.
And thank you for the update, Ms. Kiefer. Ms. Sattler Jones, do you mind if I ask Ms. Kiefer, how, when you said backlog, how many, how backlog are we? What are we talking about in numbers?
So as far as plan reviews, I think I looked just recently, and some of these are not backlogged because there are new ones coming in every day. But there are just a little bit over four hundred plan reviews pending. And there are also approximately ninety permits awaiting intake. And that high number is certainly as a result of our most current absences. So that number, I foresee in the next week to be greatly reduced. But we're just chipping away at those backlog permits, that four hundred number, and trying to get that down to just the ones within that two-reap period. But some of the permits do date back, I think as far as reviews due dates, October, or maybe even a little bit before that.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kiefer, for your update and all that you do. I have two more questions, and then I'll yield. The RFP process for the food insecurity vendors, you mentioned that we did do that, and we did go through that, Ms. Sattler Jones. Where are we with that process?
It's my understanding from our purchasing manager, a recommendation will be on the January twenty-fifth City Council agenda.
Okay, thank you. And lastly, for the mortgage and rental assistance, Ms. Sattler Jones, I don't know how we can do this, but maybe the best way is to go directly to the county to find out who they have provided assistance to, mortgage and rental assistance. Because I know that people are receiving that assistance from the county, and I just don't want us to be in a situation where people are double-dipping. Because they did have a cutoff, and some people did not receive assistance. But, and I would love for us to focus our areas in those areas where people did not get assistance, receive any assistance for mortgage and rental and not continue to give to people who have already been assisted. I want this money to help as many people as possible.
Yes, ma'am. And I do know that the county, you know, has a system that they are using to try to avoid people double-dipping, so to speak. So, I mean, that is very important, and I hope people don't do that because that can come with some serious, you know, trouble with the federal government. But we will do our very best to make sure that does not happen.
Well, people will do that, and I just don't want us to be in a situation where we're not doing our diligence, doing our due diligence on our end to avoid those and also for sparse business loans as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I see Councilman Sebastian in the queue.
All right, good afternoon, everybody. First of all, thank you, Madam City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor for recognizing me. Thank you, Madam City Manager. Let me just thank everyone again who have helped to arrange our swearing-in on the very difficult circumstances, my hats off to the staff. And I just want to tell you guys, it didn't go unnoticed by us. I share Councilwoman Mayor Pro Tim's concern over the permitting process. My election was on November thirty-eighth, and on December second, I started getting requests for permits that I've been told were like four months behind. I don't know if that's true, but they're continuing to come in. And so I'm very glad to hear that we're already on the ground. Thank you, Ms. Kiefer, that you're already on the ground, trying to get ahead of this problem. Because based on, I think, on my little knowledge of the industry, don't know about around here, because it's warm a lot of times here. But in the construction industry, the winter time is typically the time that folks do a lot of paperwork and permits and all that sort of stuff. So I can imagine that you guys are being flooded right now. And thank you for coming up with a plan for getting ahead of that. I was going to ask that question before Councilwoman Willis asks it. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and I want to chime in about that as well. I'm going to go ahead and co-sign everyone thanking you, Madam City Manager, and everyone who helped put together the swearing-in ceremony. I also want to thank those citizens who joined me on the steps of City Hall. While I was there and while we were preparing, several people were coming up asking about permits. And one of the common refrains I heard was that people were going online and then being told to call a number. And when they called the number, the mailbox was full and the, and some other people in the department did not have their mailbox, their mailboxes set up. So I do just want to make sure that, and I'm guilty of this, my mailbox is always full. But I do want, whenever possible, make sure that everyone working in that permits department is clearing out their mailboxes and that people can at least leave a message about their concerns. And then, secondly, chiming in about, I have seen some of these comments about A R P funds, and yes, I will also co-sign. I certify that we are not the holders of any unaccounted-for public money. But I also understand that to laypeople, you know, we got A R P funds, we got CARES Act money. There's talk in the news that maybe there's going to be some other money if we ever pass this infrastructure bill. I think it would be helpful, Madam City Manager, if we could get with our communications department and maybe just make some sort of infographic that explains, you know, and even if it's just internally in our South Fulton Digest. But it might, some of this might also be helpful for the public. You know, we had hazard pay, we have these thousand-dollar checks that are coming. You know, so we have all of these sorts of different payments. I think that sometimes people just get things conflated and confused. They know that we receive CARES Act money, which is an entirely different tranche of money than what some of these payments to public safety would be. So just so that everybody is on the same page and understands all the different buckets. If we had some sort of, you know, colorful one sheet that explained that, I think that that would go away in eliminating some of this confusion.
Yes, sir, we will work on that, and I definitely think those are all good ideas. And I know that, you know, some cities, much larger than we are, than we are, you know, they put things on their website so people can see how that money is being spent. And, you know, I know people use our website consistently. So having this information on the website should be very beneficial. And a one cheater would probably also be beneficial as well. So we will work on that because, again, I want people to know that we are abiding by the rules and regulations to use any federal or state monies that we receive.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Would you sound the next item?
Yes, sir. The next item is public comment. And since this is the first time we're doing this, Mr. Mayor, do you want to allot thirty minutes?
Yes, I mean, whatever, that's what we normally allot, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so, and I will just say, in opening up, I want to make sure that I believe that democracy is a conversation. And I want to make sure that we are in constant conversation with our constituents. So it is my intention that in every meeting, we will have public comment. We're going to leave the form open until twelve P M, the day of the meeting. So we will always open our meeting, or at some point in the beginning of the meeting, we will have public comment. And at some point at the end of the meeting, we will have comments from all of our council members. So I know we haven't done that in a while. You guys get ready. Ladies and gentlemen, go ahead and get ready and get your comments together for that. And all right, Mr. Clerk, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and Council, we received a total of eighteen comments through the system. We have a number of folks who would like to speak live. So I would just like to remind everyone to state your name, their address, and their district. And you will be allotted two minutes to make your comment. Today's first public comment speaker is Mr. Drew Demand. Mr. Demand, are you on the call?
Yes, here I am.
You have, please state your name, address, and district, if you know it, and you have two minutes.
Okay, this is Drew Demand. My address is forty-six forty Gordon Street, South Fulton, three zero two one three. Also appears as Fairburn, just to be on the safe side. That's what it officially is for the post office. And I'm in District Seven. So I'll be brief, because I know there are probably a lot of people to talk. And I'm just here to say thank you very much to council and the mayor. I continue to be very optimistic and enthusiastic about our city. And specifically today, just showing my support for Mayor Khalid and his agenda and the goals that we share. And I do believe that the prerogative of the council to give him the full complement of rights and responsibilities to execute his office is really important. And I want to make sure that y'all are accommodating his needs to the best of your ability. And specifically now, in terms of appointing or replacing city manager, city clerk, city attorney. I believe the mayor should have the power to do that to ensure a transition to a new administration that's functional and works with common goals. So I defer to Mayor's objective in that respect. But I want to see council support the mayor and his desire to move forward with a new suite of administrative officers. That's about the extent of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next speaker, Mr. George Oliver. Mr. Oliver, are you on the call? George Oliver. Next speaker is Mr. Dedricus Gordon. Dedricus Gordon, are you on the call? Next speaker is Mr. Christopher Bazemore. Mr. Bazemore, are you on the call? Next is Mrs. Brianna McGeehan. Brianna McGeehan.
Yep, I'm on the call.
Okay, welcome.
Okay, welcome. Um, please state your name, address, and you will have two minutes to make your comment, please.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, my name is Brianna McGeehan. I live at four six four zero Gordon Street, three zero two one three. Um at the risk of speaking fast, I'm gonna have a lot of thoughts to share. Um, first, I just want to say that I think this is a very positive moment in our city. Um, the people of the city of South Fulton have elected an activist and a democratic socialist for mayor, which is actually a very big deal. Um, we did it on purpose, not to upset members of city council that were loyal to Bill Edwards, but because we as citizens voted with our ethics and our political convictions in mind. Let me be clear that we did not elect a democratic establishment politician. We elected a democratic socialist and we elected real change. Now, I really just want to share that um it's been rather disappointing that in the weeks since Mayor Khalid won the runoff, members of our city council have tried to change the city charter without the input of the people of this city and have been working against the mayor, the people of this city elected. I'm sad to say that in this moment that could be like really exciting for our city, the city council has taken an oppositional role to our mayor and thus taken an oppositional role to the citizens. Um, I see members of city council, particularly Councilwoman Gums and Councilwoman Willis posting negative things about Mayor Khalid online. Nothing of substance that I'm going to share. I have screenshots for posterity sake, but just mean spirited comments. Um, these posts have further divided our city in a moment when we needed to be united behind our new mayor. Um, to me, this behavior is reprehensible. I hope the new members of council will look at their behavior with disdain and separate themselves from it. And unfortunately, I'll add that members of council probably have a false sense of support in that the city of South Fulton Facebook page is not a neutral space. Um, many Mayor Khalid supporters have been banned for no good reason. And honestly, the rest of us are um we're rather tired of that ten person echo chamber. I support Mayor Khalid's proposals to have legislation go through public committees and his call for the resignation of city manager, attorney, and clerk. This is a place where the charter should change so that we can have a more solid democracy in this city. We as citizens do not have the power to elect the manager, attorney, or clerk, but we do have the power to elect our mayor. And thus, the person we choose should be able to choose those employees.
Uh, your time is uh expired.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thank you for making your comment.
Thanks a lot.
The next speaker is Mrs. Jennifer Jones. Mrs. Jones, are you on the call? Uh, the next speaker is Torian Levine Hargrove. Torian Legree Hargrove. And the next speaker is Van Brown. Van Brown, are you on the call? So, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh the remaining uh comments uh were written comments, and I will read them into the record. Uh, we had two speakers, so that leaves us with twenty-six minutes uh remaining. Okay, uh reading the written comments, uh we got a comment from Jennifer Jones who lives on Woods Road in District Seven. Uh, her comment is America Merica Lee just wanted to say I support you and the council should too. Next is Torian Levine Hargrove, who lives on Willy Road in District Three. Her comment is, I support the old and new ideas of South Fulton. With promising cooperation, the citizens of South Fulton will be identified as a comprehensive growing city. The next speaker, Van Brown, who lives on Pleasant Hill Road in District Six. His comment is, I've watched numerous council meetings over the past few years, and the displays were absolutely ridiculous. You people don't have to like each other, but you do owe it to the people of this city to conduct yourselves better than I've seen. Have a meeting just among yourselves without cameras, without witnesses. In that meeting, come to an agreement on how each of you will conduct yourselves. All eyes are on you, the blackest city in America. We cannot afford to have an ignorant council full of uh explicitive. Council grade under the Edwards administration, you must do better. Next is George Oliver, who lives on Yates Road in District Three. I support Merica Lee and his ideas, and I and you all should too. Next is Dedricus Gordon, who lives on Pine Tree Trail in District Six. I support Mayor Khalid's ideas, and I think you should too, including the entire city council. Next is Mr. Christopher Bazemore on District Four, who lives on Apple Miss Drive. I support Mayor Khalid and his ideas, and you should you should too. Next is uh Karen Mc McGeehan, who lives on Eldes Street in District Seven. Her comment is, I support Mayor Khalid and his proposals to have legislation go through public committees and call for the resignations of the city manager, attorney, and clerk. I support Mayor Khalid, and you all should too.
Recording in progress.
Uh, next is uh David Rector, who lives in District Four on Edgewood Cove. His comment is when city of South Fulton police officers patrol, they riot by vehicles parked against the flow of traffic rather than ticketing violators. Additionally, cars running stop signs and speeding within the subdivisions and on the streets of the city of South Fulton is a serious and dangerous problem for residents, pedestrians, and visitors. We would like for Chief Meadows to assign marked and unmarked cars to stop sign intersections within subdivisions and on streets to ticket drivers who fail to stop at stop signs and to ticket drivers violating the speed limits on a regular basis. Within the city of South Fulton, there is a serious problem with speeding, running stop signs, parking against the flow of traffic, and overnight street parking. Residents should like for the police department, code enforcement, and public works departments to work with us to help resolve these issues. Next is Mrs. Pamela Harris, who lives on Lion Avenue in District One. She says, my name is Pamela Harris, and on behalf of the constituents in District One of the city of South Fulton, I am publicly demanding that Catherine Ral support our newly elected Mayor Khalid Kamau. Often in a new administration in government, it's often customary to request the resignation of all administrators, agency heads, deputies, assistants, and other immediate assistants to take effect upon acceptance of the mayor. Mayor-elect. The council advised mayor-elect of their displeasure, and he immediately apologized. This practice of asking for resignations is done often when there's a cha- change of guard realizing or with the understanding that a number of employees may wish to continue their public service and will be reappointed or wish to remain to assist in the orderly transition. Corey Adams has done an exceptional job, in my opinion, and he is one of the most efficient city clerks that I've had the privilege to watch over the years. I don't believe that anyone would accept his resignation ever. Let's move on already with the hope that you, Catherine Ral, will consider your employees by keeping us informed. And in return, we will make every effort to make this city that we can all be proud of. Next is Mrs. Joyce Armstead, who lives on Creole Road in District Six. She states, I'm the president of Heritage Park Homeowners Association and an all room Old National Area Residence United. I am looking forward to working with each of you and making our city be the best of the best. The youth may know the road, but the elders know the way. Next is Mr. Richard Snellings, who lives on Lock Loman Trail in District One. On January fourth, twenty twenty-two, Mayor Khalid announced priorities to have a forensic audit of all contracts and finances of the city. He is also, he also mentioned that he would like to create a position for a public advocate. He also requested the resignation letters of the city attorney and city manager. It's important that the residents understand that the mayor acknowledged during this speech, he does not have the authority to fire, and and these were requests. Gums eloquently stated on the stage at St. James Live that council is here to support the mayor. Now that you got your little resolution out the way, let's start working with the mayor by approving the items mentioned by the mayor on January fourth after his unofficial swearing in. Next is Mr. Carl Neil, who lives on Sandy Pine Drive in District One. He states, I support Mayor Khalid, and I wish the other council members did as well. No new administration should have to work with leaders picked out by the prior administration. Also, stop trying to further limit the mayors. As Helen stated, figurehead only limited powers. Enough is enough. Next is uh Mrs. Drusilla Tally Williams, who lives on Hubbard Walk in District One. She says, hi, this is Drusilla Tally Williams of District One. I am extremely excited for the new year and I in in new city of South Fulton administration to be led by Khalid Kamau. Though there seems to be quite a bit of chaos and divisiveness, it is my expectation that my vote represents unity. Unity doesn't mean groupthink or single-mindedness, but rather respect and cohesiveness that is sometimes forged by forged by a singular vision. In this case, that vision should not only be only branding the city of South Fulton as the blackest city in America, but the most inviting, the most prosperous, and the most innovative. I believe that this is the is Mayor Khalid's vision, and the people of the city have let our voices be heard to make way for this new direction. Not only should staff, but anyone else who doesn't support the vision, might also consider render rendering their resignation to make room for those who are interested in being solution oriented instead of destructive. Thank you. Next is uh comment from Miss Jill Lindsay, who lives in District Seven. She states, I support Mayor Khalid Kamau in whatever he needs to do to bring our city together. The citizens and communities and business owners are depending on our leaders to do right and work together in harmony. Thank you. And oh, we have two more. Uh, next is uh this is Jane Williams, who lives on Shenfield Lane in District Five. She states, good evening, everyone. Congratulations to newly elected and to our new council as a whole. I would like to express my disappointment from your unsatisfactory level of service. I've expected much more from a prestigious and esteemed council of your standard. Unfortunately, I can't help but submit this letter of complaint, hoping for a fast and adequate resolution. My heart is grieved with all of the bickering going on with this council, beginning at the very top. Y'all can't agree on anything from the charter to your employees. And who suffers? The community. We still have sidewalks that goes nowhere on Flash shows road along with bad lighting, overgrown grass, et cetera. Can we address the issues of these of South Fulton? I am tired of the embarrassment that is brought to the city. I hope y'all agree with me that this is not acceptable under any circumstance. I trust that you will deal with this issue in a top urgent fashion. I also trust that you will take the necessary precautions to prevent such incidents in the future. If not, I think we, the community, should consider our options for the city. Thank you, Jane Williams. And the last speaker is uh Jerome Carter, who lives on Lock Loman Trail in District One. Um, something for the residents to consider. Khalid's official swearing in occurred last Thursday. The comments he made requesting resignations was prior to him being sworn in. He had no power to do anything because he was mayor-elect. This entire resolution is a fraud perpetrated by Ral Gums, Willis, Sebastian Reeves, and Williams. These council people violated Charter and the Open Meetings Act by not giving sufficient notice to the public for their illegal press conference. Who is writing the resolution of disapproval for them for violating the charter that they took an oath to protect? I'd also like to call attention to Kamalita Gums. She she went on Facebook and told a resident that our mayor's only job is to shake hands and kiss babies. People gets no more disrespectful than especially considering Khalid has been nothing but diplomatic to these council members. According to Gums, since the mayor has no power to do anything, everything bad that happens in the city is due of the city council, and they should bear complete responsibility since they have all the power for Kamalita. Miss Gums, if you don't like him, just say that. That completes public comment for today.
Um, okay, Mr. Clerk, uh would you sound the next item?
Yes, the next item is presentations. Um, Mr. Mayor, Council, the first presentation, Department of Human Resources policy changes. It is my understanding that the city manager wishes to uh remove that item and hold that for a later time.
Is is that correct, Madam City Manager?
Yes, sir, it is. And also, our um HR director is ill today. So um we would like to hold that to a later date.
That's fine. I knew we were gonna, I thought we were gonna talk about some things. Well, please get well soon, Miss Graham. And we'll go on to the next item, more benefits.
Yes, the next item is item two under presentations. It's the Police Department recommended bonuses and incentives. And I believe uh City Manager uh Sally Jones, you're gonna introduce this for the chief?
Yes, um, thank you so much. Um, our chief um Keith Meadows um has presented to me um a recommendation that we look at uh bonuses, retention, and recruitment bonuses for our police department. And I know he and his command staff have uh discussed this and put together a presentation for council to consider. Uh, so I wanted to turn it over to Chief Meadows. And you know, we're not asking specifically for a decision today. Just want to get the council's uh feedback, and we will continue to uh look into this matter and uh come up with a recommendation if you are inclined to be in support of it. So, Chief Meadows.
Good afternoon. How's everyone doing? Um, I wanted to thank you all for taking um this time to listen to this presentation. I wish I could take credit for it. I actually have Lieutenant Jubal Rogers on with me today. He brought this program to my attention, and I'm very big on leadership. And uh one of the biggest parts of leadership is being able to sell your ideas. So I have him on uh the call with me. So we're gonna go through uh to the first slide. One of the problems that we're seeing in law enforcement today is um uh high attrition rates. I mean, the national uh average attrition rate is is uh eight, ten point eight percent. And uh the city of South Fulton is at eleven point two percent, which is slightly above that. We're not doing bad in comparison to uh most police departments in the region. But our goal here is to try to make sure that we stay on the proactive end of our maintaining our workforce. Uh, you'll see if you go on to the next slide. Um, many, many agencies in the Atlanta metropolitan area have these retention and um hiring bonuses. Um, when Lieutenant Rogers brought this to my attention, he actually did all of the research on this in terms of reaching out uh to a lot of the different agencies. You'll see that the Atlanta Police Department gives a three thousand dollar retention bonus after you've attained five years of service. Cobb County is doing a five hundred dollar bonus for um post-certified police officers, and the list goes on and on. And most recently, uh the Fulton County Sheriff instituted a nine thousand dollar uh hiring bonus um for uh the Fulton County Sheriff's Office. So as you can see throughout the region, uh many police departments are taking those proactive steps to not only maintain, but to also build their workforce. Um, if we think about some of the, we think about some of the vacancies in other departments right now. The city of Atlanta has nearly six hundred vacancies. Uh, Clayton County has fifty-four, Cobb County has thirty-two. Um, East Point has thirty-four. Uh, and uh the city of College Park has twenty-eight. All of all of these police departments are in competition for a relatively small workforce because people going into law enforcement, the numbers are shrinking every year. And so it becomes important for us to stay as competitive as we can. And so it becomes important for us to stay as competitive as we can and we're trying to stay on the forefront of that competition. And so when we look at um our own workforce, we're at a hundred and seventy-eight um in terms of personnel right now. And when we first started back in twenty eighteen, when the police department came over uh from Fulton County, we only had eighty-seven police officers. Well, right now we've been able to double that force. And so a majority of those police officers that came on during that last three-year period, they're actually eligible, most are eligible um to seek employment elsewhere. After two years, state law um uh requires them to stay with their hiring agency, otherwise the um hiring agency uh would have to compensate um the initial police department. Well, we're far past that right now. Uh, we're in year three for many of our police officers. And as we look at it, we have forty-three police officers um within our among our ranks that would be eligible to leave after we've put them through the academy. Now, I A C P says that if we spend nearly a hundred thousand dollars um between the time we hire a police officer and the time they actually graduate from the police academy. And if you think about that that in terms of dollars, um that's a significant amount of money. We're looking at four point three million dollars um just of that investment. And I think it's important for us to try to maintain that personnel. And so history teaches us, if we keep a police officer up to nine years, uh that we pretty much have them for the rest of their career. You can go on to the next slide. So here's how it will work. Uh, the recruitment uh bonus would be a three thousand dollar hiring bonus for uh um post-certified police officers coming to the city of South Fulton. They would agree to a three-year contract uh to serve that time uh with the police department. Um, the recruitment, I'm sorry, the the uh retention bonus would serve as a three-year commitment also. We would ask that the police officer sign a uh an employment contract with the city of um South Fulton. I've spoken with um Ms. Graham, the HR Director, and she's she's had previous experience with this program and other agencies. And she has some contracts and some policy um issues that we're we're interested in sitting down and looking at. We've also looked at some best practices from other police departments throughout the region. Um, you can go on to the next slide. And so here's the funding justification for it. In twenty eighteen, as I said, we only had eighty-seven staff members um that was on board at that time. Uh, we hired a total of forty-four in that um next year. And then we hired a total of twenty um that previous year. And I think in twenty twenty-one, I think we hired another twenty-two, twenty-three officers. And so that pretty much puts us where we are today and we're looking at uh building on those numbers. But as I said early, we want we wanna maintain our workforce. Uh, if you look at the retention year, uh we would look at paying out two hundred and sixty-one thousand uh in terms of bonuses uh for people that had a retention year of twenty twenty-one. We would look at budgeting um the forty-four that would maintain that would um attain their retention year in twenty twenty-two. We would look at implementing that in the um twenty FY twenty twenty-three budget, but however, we would pay it out uh at some point during twenty twenty-two by the end of this year. And then we would also look at budgeting uh in in subsequent years to uh issue the uh retention bonus for those that would attain their retention year in twenty twenty-three. Now, the hiring bonus, you all were gracious in terms of allowing us to um uh get twenty-eight more police positions uh in the upcoming budget. We anticipate that potentially half of those might be post-certified people in addition to the vacancies that we already had. And so we would be looking at an estimated cost of nearly sixty thousand dollars for um the hiring incentives to bring uh police officers on. Uh, as I said, we have many police departments that are implementing the same pro uh program. And police officers are leaving their their original hiring agencies for these incentives. You can go on to the next slide. Now, we understand this isn't just a silver bullet. This isn't the one thing that's going to keep us from um being able to maintain and build our workforce. We're looking at a number of different options and alternatives here. Uh, right now, we have a um a program where we're allowing uh people that want to pursue um uh leadership positions. We're sending people to leadership classes. Right now, we have two of our captains down at Command College pursuing their master's degrees. We have a number of our employees going to Atlanta Metropolitan State uh College um taking leadership classes. Uh, those are uh courses that we're paying for uh through our educational fund. Um, those are other incentives that we're looking at. But then also, when we think about the vision for most police departments, we we have a lot of younger people that that are really interested in technology and pursuing um the technological advances that's coming into law enforcement. And we've done a very good job of pitching that vision uh to a lot of our young people. As we're going out to places like Atlanta Metropolitan, we're asking our command staff to be guest speakers at a lot of the local colleges and universities and trying to sell and pitch that vision to a lot of the young college students. So that we're attracting the type of workforce uh that we really wanna see within the city of South Fulton Police Department. You can go on to the next slide. Um, I mentioned earlier that we're looking at policy development. We don't, we wanna be really good stewards of the money. Um, the money that you all are going to give to us. Uh, we wanna make sure that we're protecting the city's investment. And so we're looking at a lot of different uh policies as it relates to retention and hiring bonuses and making sure that we protect the city's interest. And so that's one of the things I've asked Lieutenant uh Jubal to get started on. He heads up our our uh planning and research department. Um, and he also works in the Office of Professional Standards. You can go on to the next slide. Okay, so I do have Lieutenant Jubal on the line right now, and I really would like for him to uh say a few words before we go into um the question and answer session because he had the opportunity to speak with a number of our police officers and and what this program would actually mean to them. Lieutenant uh Rogers?
Thank you, Chief. Uh, as mentioned, my name is Lieutenant Rogers, assigned to the Planning and Research Section at Office of Professional Standards. Uh, yeah, I've spoke to some of the officers. I think, you know, pretty much speaking on their behalf, you know, this this recommendation, if if approved, is a step in the right direction uh for us to uh continue to attract, hire and retain, you know, the best South Fulton PD officers. Uh, we have some of the best trained officers in the region that have worked tires tirelessly during the pandemic and other recent events. Uh, just speaking offhand, we've lost a few officers to Sandy Springs, another premier agency in Fulton County. And during the background of recruitment process um for candidates who have uh made it, you know, towards the end of the process, uh we've lost candidates throughout the process uh to other agencies when they've uh accepted other offers um to competing agencies who offer these retention and hiring bonuses as well. Um, just speaking from the officers, you know, recruiting from qualified applicant pools and retaining these best officers, it's gonna be a challenge in the next few months and years to come. So it's important that we could, you know, continue to get ahead of this. And I think the officers are they're thankful uh that this has been brought before city council for uh recommendation. And we think this is a uh step in the right direction to assist us in our uh retention and recruitment efforts and also to help boost morale uh in the police department.
Thank you so much, uh Lieutenant Rogers. Now, having said that, we'll open up the floor for uh comments or questions.
All right, I see Mayor Pro Tim Willis in the queue.
Yes, and so um thank you for your presentation. Um, uh Chief Meadows, what is this money coming from the American Rescue Plan? Is that is is this the recommendation to fund this?
Well, that was one of the things we really wanted to talk with the body about. We could conceivably use our salary savings or um we could use um another funding source, but it's essentially, it would be uh something that we would sit down with the city manager and finance in an effort to try to identify uh the funding source. Right now, I believe that we have about twenty-eight unfilled posi- um unfilled positions. And we would be looking at leveraging uh those salary savings in an effort to pay out these hiring and retention bonuses.
And so, um, uh, Ms. Sally Jones, I will recommend that you get with Chief Meadows and a CFO and come up with a plan to fund this recommendation. And I and I would suggest that you look to salary savings first. Um, I I do um know that this is a problem um across the nation, not only across the state, not only across Metro Atlanta, um but we do not want to put our um selves in a position where we are losing officers to other agencies because we're not remaining um competitive in salary. And um as stated, yes, the sheriff office is um looking to a nine thousand dollar bonus. But I also want to make sure that we make sure that if we are um giving bonuses, that it does come with some type of contract that will um make the officers uh commit uh to um staying with our city. And then possibly, I don't know how we can legally do this, but I will also look at um may if we can look to a criteria to uh compensate officers to live in our city as well. Um, some type of compensation bonus or put it apart. I mean, I don't know if we can legally do that. At one point, I was told that we could not. That would be uh, well, I would ask if we can legally do that um that we look to that as well. Uh, the other question, Ms. Sally Jones, I I know that this is a presentation for police, but what about the fire? I mean, um, is Chad um Jones, Chief Chad Jones, gonna bring forth some type of type type of recommendation is um as far as uh retaining and attracting uh fire personnel as well? Cause I just don't want to wanna look at public safety retention um and recruiting as a whole.
Yes, ma'am. I mean, I would definitely think that if we are doing it for the police department, we should be doing it for our fire personnel as well. So I'll I'll get with Chief Jones and um discuss this with him. He and I haven't had a chance to, uh but definitely it would be my recommendation that if the council is supportive of doing this for police, that we also do it for fire.
Okay, well, I'm not, I'm not, I can't speak for the entire council, but I'm definitely supportive of some of these suggestions that have come before us. Um, but I um, the only thing that I wish would have been brought before us is a sound way of how we were gonna fund this because, you know, we have to um, that's that's to me, that's very important, how are we gonna fund this? And looking to salary savings um will be the first um will be the first way. Can confiscated funds be used for any of this?
Hmm, you can't use confiscated funds for salaries. Normally, but normally budgeted items, you you you're not able to use confiscated funds for.
Okay, so I will look, if you can, um, Chief Meadows, for me, can you find out if we can compensate our officers? Um, if they are given some type of um bonus, if they live in our city as well. Um, also, um, if we could tie this to like a lot of agencies are doing, if we give them this bonus, they have to commit to our um city agency uh three to five years. I don't know what the um loan rate is. Or they have to pay the money back if they leave before that time. And um you already, you know, look to education and experience as well. Um, I I always thought it was foolish to bring officers in at one flat base rate and not look at and give them some um some type of uh extra compensation based on their experience and education. Um, because uh that matters when you're talking about um law enforcement. Thank you.
And so, Councilwoman, the uh housing incentives for public safety personnel is gonna be rolled out of the city manager's office, I believe, next month. City Manager?
Yes, we should have that rolled out by next month. Um, our HR department, along with my office, and we have representatives from police and fire are looking at the details of that program and the council you all voted um to fund the program based upon a pilot program. And of course, uh we are uh looking to kick that off. And then if it's successful, it would be my recommendation, you know, that we provide that funding in future budgets as well.
Okay, thank you so much. Those those are all the questions that I have at this time. Uh, Mayor, are you?
Thank you. Uh, and and I usually wait to the end, but uh Mayor Pro Tim Willis, so many of our, um, you mirrored so many of our thoughts. I do just wanna ask a few follow-up questions. I do also, I am also concerned. I do think that these are great benefits. I love Madam City Manager incentivizing officers to live in our city. Uh, many studies have shown that when officers live in communities and when officers um have degrees Sandy Springs, which have much larger budgets. And so I just want to make sure as we are scaling up our police department, that we are considering the cost of these benefits, not only for the number of officers that we have now, but what it might cost to continue and maintain them in future years as our numbers increase. Um, I also uh agree with Mayor Pro Tim Willis around the uh the contractual obligations. I uh, some people may be surprised to know this, but at but at one time I was applying to be a police officer and I applied to be a firefighter. I think I just liked the CPAD test. But um in Gwinnett, I know, I believe that they they sign their officers to a four-year contract. And each year, you know, uh if if they leave in the first year, they have to reimburse one hundred percent, seventy-five percent in the second year and so on and so forth. I believe that that is how it works. And it it is not just for the bonuses, but for the entire cost of training. And I am just wondering, Chief Meadows, had you thought about that? Because you did say it it costs over a hundred thousand dollars really to train an officer.
Yes, we we've looked at that and we've looked at um the state law um allows us to maintain our investment for the first two years once we put someone through the police academy. Uh, and we've had pretty, pretty good success with maintaining um those employees. Well, we're coming up on the end of a large portion of our police officers that we hired uh there. And so when we look at or you talk about maintaining that, you're looking at forty-three police officers, which comes to roughly around at a hundred thousand, four point three million dollars that we've invested in these people. And when we talk about, you know, the amount of money that we're we're talking about, it's really pennies on the dollars in comparison to the initial investment that we made. And so uh for us to continue to build on our workforce and to continue to attract the type of people that we want in the South Fulton Police Department, this is gonna be essential that we be um think outside the box and continue to be a little innovative with respects to our approach to this issue.
Awesome. And thank you so much for that correction. So you're you're saying the state law prohibits us from recouping expenses after two years. So whatever we put in after two years, a a officer in any municipality can then move on.
Right. They can move on after that too. And see where we're up against that window now. So we just wanna make sure that we maintain that initial investment.
Understood. Um, I see in the queue, Dr. Raul, Council uh Councilman Sebastian, and I see uh uh Councilman Reeves hand raised, so I I will go to him after Councilman Sebastian. And I and one more quick uh note, I am seeing some comments in the chat that the sound went out. We have been talking with Mr. Hammond. Apparently, the power went out where he was, but we are going to have a uh video with uh all of the sound uh available after this meeting. And with that, I will go to Dr. Rau.
Thank you for that presentation. And I um uh mirror the sentiments of my colleagues. I fully support this. And I wanna thank the city manager because um I approached her about housing for police very long time ago. And I'm glad that um it's forthcoming and you'll be presenting next month. Um, as we um think about, you know, how we continue to kinda continue our trend of reducing crime across our city, which we've had much success over the last, since our incorporation. Um, I look forward to our us as a body supporting this initiative. So I I look forward to hearing also from Chief uh Jones about what structure makes sense for the fire department going forward to make sure we keep our firefighters um with our department. Thank you.
Thank you so much and Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um thank you, um Chief Meadows for that presentation. I um just wanna echo sentiments as our mayor and council um Member Willis and Royal that I'm in full support of some incentive program. Um and taking into also into consideration that we may not be able to compete with the sheriff and Atlanta or you know even Fulton County um with their um bigger budgets. However, I'm in support of what we can do, some program that will help us to attract and maintain the talent that we need for our city. I I have one question, I guess it's a new guy question for Chief Meadows. Uh and I may have a follow up. Um at what age, what's the minimum age of recruiting someone into the police department?
The minimum age is twenty-one years of of age. Um and so we've hired people at the age of twenty, but you have to be twenty-one by the time you graduate uh from the police academy.
Okay, good. So wh- which means um we're not recruiting folks certainly out of high school. Uh but are we recruiting folks from the colleges around?
That's the one, that's 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 a huge initiative for us. As we send people to leadership classes, we're asking them to go to places like Clark Atlanta, Atlanta Metro, Georgia State um and and be guest speakers. Uh we have quite a few of our um uh top level people within the organization going to these different um uh institutions and and being guest speakers. And and we believe that that helps in the way of recruitment, especially when we're casting our vision uh for the organization. We just wanna let these young people know in college that we're on the cutting edge of of technology. And certainly, everybody wants to be part of that, you know, as as we move into the new era of policing.
Awesome. Thank you, sir.
All right, uh Councilman Reeves.
Uh thank you, Mr. Chair, for recognizing me. Uh Chief, I just wanna thank you for implementing the implementation plan from the Twenty First Century Policing Resolution. And uh to Captain Toots for increasing the visibility with Coffee with a Cop and Lieutenant Rogers for increasing our digital communication with community policing. And I fully support and share all the sentiments my colleagues share and fully support this effort. And uh like I like would say, as stated, we would like to have fire involved as well. And so we can get all our first responders. Me personally, I would like to see, even even though it might not be popular, uh all of the educators within the city of South Fulton who live in this city of South Fulton, you know, be considered as well and um just keep doing a great job. And thank you for and thank you for uh constantly reducing the crime, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much, uh Mr. Reeves. I'm not sure that we could compensate educators. I think that that would be for the Fulton County Board of Education, but I definitely, who has a much larger budget but than all of us? If you uh have seen your property tax bill, so but I think that's definitely something we can talk to uh uh Ms. Dove and and Mr. Booney about. Um all right, so sound the next item, Mr. Clerk.
Yes, sir. The next item is item three, which is uh city calendar. And this discussion is uh gonna be led by you. Um I would like to point out that uh this item does include three items which were included in the agenda package, which is the city events calendar, a wellness days uh draft resolution, and a Kwanzaa holiday draft resolution.
All right, so we uh we will, we will take these um I guess individually, the the first, I'm gonna go ahead and share my screen.
Oh, I was gonna do it for you.
Oh, no, it's fine. I uh cause I I'm I've I've uh, would you allow me to share my screen? I have a draft document. I I want us to try and uh write some things in this document uh as we go forward. Do I have that ability, sir?
Yeah, you you have that ability.
And then I I am gonna let you share when we get to these to these other items. So um we'll talk about the the wellness days and the the Kwanzaa holiday. But one of the things that I have been very passionate about is making sure that we have a master calendar for the entire year of events, which I think not only builds a sense of community, but I I think uh Mister, Mister, I'm gonna ask uh Madam City Manager if if Mr. Lefwitch could chime in about this. But it helps both and and uh Mr. Landrum, it helps both our Bureau of Cultural Affairs and our Communications Department to plan ahead. I think so uh sometimes we have come, I know that I have come to the communications manager to uh the Parks Department and say, hey, I wanna do this thing. And you know, maybe, maybe we didn't give enough time for uh those departments to really gear up for that. Maybe there were other council people that were having other events or other things were being planned in the city. So I believe that just having this calendar of events will really help us uh going forward. Would it be all right, Madam City Manager, for our communications director to chime in about that?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Um absolutely, any uh chance we have to get ahead and start on planning and be proactive uh certainly helps us in planning uh the event. And it also helps make the event much better if we have time to plan. So this is very beneficial. Um we have as record the city's website calendar as the official uh calendar of events and we keep that updated with everything that is submitted to us. And so we are able to uh with these, we will be able to build that calendar out further.
And with that calendar, Mr. Lefwitch, is it a month to month calendar? Can people look at the entire year to see what events have already been scheduled?
Yes, you were able to click and then uh as with most calendar applications, you can forward uh through the months and each calendar comes up with a month with specific days in it.
All right, and uh what we we talked about this briefly and I'm going to ask uh our I T director. When possible, I know there there are many things on your plate and they're small and it's a small department. But in uh for some businesses, when you go to their website and you see a calendar of events, you can click a button and add that event to your own calendar. Uh you know, whether you have iCal or Google Calendar or or whatever. And so I would love to have that functionality for events. And with that, I am going to um open this up to all members of council if you have events. And I would also, if there, if if you see an event that is missing that you know that you're going to have, that we can let Mr. Lefwitch know about, uh if you could let us know about those events, that would be super helpful. All right, Mayor Pro Tim Willis.
So I I'm a little confused. We are already doing this. What is different from what we're already doing? Um Mr. Lefrich uh already sends out requests periodically asking us for events four and five months ahead to inform the communications department. If we are involved in parking recreations, we have a request form that we have to complete to send to Parker Recreation. If media is needed, then uh we copy uh uh Mr. Lefrich in. He we he sends out a weekly um calendar of events of everything that happens in Parker Recreation. Early on, he sent us a uh and he probably needs to resend it uh instructions on how to update our outlook uh so that we could see all events that are um taking place in the city, whether it's a council event, whether it's a Parker Recreation event. Um if the if everyone is following protocol and submitting events through communication and through Parker Recreation, he puts all of the stuff on a calendar and we can see it um through our outlook calendar. Um eh correct, Mr. Lefrich, that weren't you the one to send out instructions on how to do that to the entire mayor and council and staff?
Yes, that is correct. We did send that out. It's been several months ago and we uh absolutely can send it again this week.
Okay, cause my LS set mine up and I was able to. Now, what typically happens is sometimes uh council members have events and they don't follow protocol. They don't send information through communication. They don't send, they don't fill out this facility request through Parks and Recreation. And sometimes where we are sometimes butting heads is where staff don't know that stuff is happening. Um so we are already doing this. I guess, Mr., I guess, Mayor, what are you asking us to do different from what we are already doing? We're already doing this.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Willis. Mr. Lefwitch, has that process been working out for the communications department? Do you feel that this is not a necessary uh exercise to go through right now?
I think the value in this lies in the fact that it gets everything, um especially major events on one page. And uh it 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 sort of is a duplication of the calendar. However, what you've got on here is research that has identified uh dates for this year. And when we do put out those requests each month, uh there are a lot of things that are not included that then we find out about later. So uh anything that could help the process and flow of information that we receive, because what not only are we able to prepare better for events, but people are able to look at that calendar for specific dates if they are considering those dates for an event of their own and realize that date is taken. I don't need to plan something. I need to go to another day. So uh anything we can do to enhance use of the website calendar is beneficial.
And so I and and I still have the floor, if you don't mind. You like you have things on here that I organize and I'm not sure if I'm going to do the event in September or October. And so some of these events have not been planned out. And what I don't recommend that we do is have two separate calendars. We need to make sure we are doing what we are currently doing and that is keeping everything. Let staff drive this calendar and we submit our information to communications, which is what we are already doing. Once we get things planned out, to sit here um and try to figure out what we're gonna do from January to December is going to be time consuming. And I'm I'm pretty sure, especially the new council members who are coming on, they haven't really thought out what they wanna do community outreach wise. They may have some ideas, but I'm pretty sure they haven't planned it out. And as we plan out our activities, you know, we can send that information to communications um like we already do. And communication will put that information on a calendar. And I would ask Miss Mr. Lefrich to um please resend the instructions to everyone so we will know how to uh update our outlook so everybody can see, you know, what's going on. Thank you, Ayew.
Thank you. Uh and and I I I agree, uh Councilman Willis, we definitely don't want to duplicate calendars. This is not meant to be a published calendar anywhere, but just a collection, as Mr. Lefwitch has said. If we know that we have major events, if you're not sure about doing the Yik Fest, I will uh take that off of the calendar. But what I am hoping that we can do is create a practice that at the beginning of each year, that every January, uh we can think long term about the year ahead and what events, what major events we think that we might have just to give our uh department heads as much time as possible. Uh so what we'll do is after, we're just gonna spend a few minutes on this exercise. Mr. Lefwitch, I will, whatever things are added in, I will make sure that you get that so that you can incorporate that into our uh city calendar online before you send instructions out, so that when we, when you do send those instructions out, these events will also be included. Uh Dr. Rau.
Thank you, uh Mayor. Um I I'm not gonna echo too much about what Councilwoman Willis said. I think the current process has generally worked well. Even when I was not aware of events, I found myself in a position where I could go to the city's website, click on the calendar, and it not only allows me to see a city sponsored events, but all the various boards that we already have operating when they're meeting. So that's been extremely helpful. Um I just had a question. This might be a question for um maybe our city attorney um or maybe the city manager. I know on this list, we have a number of events. All of them are not city sponsors event.
Mm-hmm.
We we are not suggesting that we put outside events on this calendar, correct?
It would be my recommendation, Councilmember Ral, that this would be only for city sponsored events. And I will share some information with the council and I'll I'll email it to you from my previous organization. Uh just an example of city sponsored events, the council did approve it at the beginning of the year. And it was helpful for our communications team at that particular municipality to push out, you know, brochures and calendar information. So people knew from January through December specifically what city sponsored events were going to be planned for a particular calendar year. Uh I wouldn't, you know, necessarily recommend any events that are not sponsored by the city uh to, you know, basically answer your question.
So so for this calendar, it would be like State of the City, uh Joe Keen, that kind of thing would be on this calendar that we would kinda promote to residents.
Yes, that would be my recommendation, that it would be those type of specific city sponsored events.
Okay, and then one other question, um eh wh- what are the wellness days?
We're we're um, we're gonna talk about that next. Would they be separate agenda items, but we're gonna talk about the calendar and then the wellness days and then these uh and then this resolution.
Okay, thank you.
Can I, can I ask uh Madam City Manager with the city sponsored events or 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 whoever might be able to answer, is, for example, the Old National Merchants Association 5K? That is not necessarily a city sponsored event, correct?
Mayor, I'm not familiar with that particular event unless one of the staff people are. Any any staff or anybody in parks familiar with that event?
So I think uh, so this is, this is a perfect example. I I think that, and and I'll ask Chief Meadows to speak to this. So this event is sponsored by the Old National Merchants Association. However, members of council uh of councils from both College Park and and the city of South Fulton uh are are there. They have a presence. We have tables. But more importantly, we shut down a lane of Old National Highway for uh a few hours that morning. And so though it is not a city sponsored event, our police department is involved in that event. And I think those, those are the kinds of major events that I I think that that should be included. Uh Chief Meadows, would you wanna chime in on that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat the question, Mayor?
You um, this is not a city sponsored event, but will you just talk about what the police department does do for the Old National 5K?
Well, uh historically, it's been an off duty job. They would hire uh off duty police officers to come in and work. Um now, normally, if we adopt something as a city sponsored event, then we put, we provide those services. Uh if it's not anything the city is willing to adopt, then we usually require that it be um in terms of off duty employment.
And how does it work with shutting down a lane on Old National Highway, which is a state route?
We have to get permission from D O T. Uh if it moves along with the traffic, then we Uh if it moves along with the traffic, then we're usually fine. But if we're talking about blocking off traffic, then we have to get permission from DOT to um or a permit through DOT to um to have the uh event.
And do you at, for the police department apply for that permit, or does the Old National Merchants Association apply?
The um, the vendor would, uh or the, I'm sorry, the uh host would have to apply for it.
All right. And are you copied on that? Do, what what involvement do you have with getting?
We would actually have to approve the uh event uh application. And in that event application, we would have to see whether they've made application to the state uh to close a lane, uh where they have their security um uh plan in place. And so we would sign off to see if it's sufficient uh for the number of individuals that they're talking about. Also, uh whether or not fire has weighed in on um EMS um support as well.
Thank you. And so I do think that that whether whether or not we promote them as city events, Madam City Manager, I do think that when we have our public safety officers, uh whether on duty or off duty, when they are working these events, I think it's just something for us to be cognizant of as a city. Uh Councilman Sebastian.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I a- actually, I'm in favor. Every organization, I think, needs an overall calendar. Um but I think I I heard um Madam City Manager said um for specific city events, city sponsored events. And I think we need to make sure we're not um taking up more than we we should. Um because there are major events, I think, that happen all over the city um that sometimes need our police department's support and and maybe other resources that are not necessarily listed here, but they may not be city events. And I I think basically how it does work in the past is that people made these requests to, for support and the police department decide um whether they're gonna support or not based on our resources. But um but I I do agree that having a big overall calendar at the beginning of the year for the major city events um should be in order. But I'm saying that um also without the knowledge of knowing um what the city, how the city calendar works, except what I've looked on as a citizen. So I look forward to learning more about that process. Um Mr. Communications Director, thank you.
Thank you. Uh Councilman Reeves.
Yes, thank you. Uh I wanna know, Madam Jones, what constitutes a city event? Uh as it's defined? And also then, when we have subsequent events that we're doing on behalf of the city, what constitutes constitutes a council sponsored event? And can you give us the difference?
We have um, the city has an ordinance. I believe that defines what a city sponsored event is. And I'm sorry, I don't have it right here in front of me, and I may have to follow up and and provide that information to you. But I do know that there, it also mentions that if, I believe, two or three council members plan an event, that's considered a a city sponsored event as well. But I apologize, I don't have that information right here in front of me.
Councilman Reeves, the board passed Resolution 2019 dash zero five two. It's entitled a resolution promoting administrative clarity, regulating events and for other lawful purposes. And in section one, it says a city event shall be defined as an event where the public is invited by city officials and or city administration uh to recognize, discuss, and or address city topics, activities, events, or legislation. And I'm skipping down to the authorization part. It says all proposed city events shall be brought before the city council for approval prior to holding event. Uh such proof shall be obtained in advance and notice of the event being circulated. So that uh resolution, I can go ahead and forward to you everyone so they can look at it um while they're considering this topic. Uh uh no, good, thank you, cuz that that's for the edification of the public. And so, you know, uh because, right, we do know that that ordinance is in place. And then the the subsequent question is if, if that's if three or more have it, it's considered a city event. But if one council member has it, and I wanna uh ask this as it pertains to the city seal of the city logo. If a council member has an event, will we be able to put the city seal and city logo on that? Because that subsequently belongs to the city, and if they see that logo, they will just automatically dub it a city event.
I think that um if a city council member is having an event, that you should be able to use the city logo. Um and I'm glad you mentioned that because Mr. Leffrich and I in his office are planning to bring forth to the council a branding policy. Uh so that information will be included in regards to proper uses of the city logo.
Thank you, Madam Jones.
All right, and we're gonna close out this part of the conversation with uh Mayor Pro Tim Willis.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you pull up your calendar again, if you don't mind?
Not at all. Here we are.
So the Divine Nine uh 5K race is not a city sponsored event. Um we, a lot of, it started out of Welcome All Park, and I do help them organizing and several other council members have uh helped them organize it and and we do partner with them, but they pay for police. We don't, we we don't. And we gotta be careful when we say city events. We don't want to deem everything to be a city event because um some, that's the way some of our police officers and fire personnel um, you know, get compensated for for part-time um off-duty work when they have to come in and put um in extra hours. For example, the Peachtree Road Race um is a historical event that happens every year in the city of Atlanta. That's not a city of Atlanta sponsored event. You know, they have a, that's a separate organization sponsoring that event. I think it's the AJC. And so that is not a city sponsored event. The Yeek Festival is not a city sponsored event. I work with the organizers and I help put it on, but it's not a city sponsored event. Um I'm looking at some of the other things that's on here. You mentioned the Old National Merchants Association. That's not a city, I mean, uh uh oh in in 5K, that's not a city sponsored event. And also the Own That Day, I don't recall that being a city sponsored event either. But I do, but the, but the, so maybe this is something that um we can take up, you know, spend more time in when we do the retreat on, you know, how many city sponsored events we wanna have, what's, what city, what city sponsored event should be. I'm sorry.
The Porsche brand, unless you go.
I mean, that would just be my recommendation, um because it just seems like this conversation is just going um way off. And I'm gonna continue to submit myself the way that the policy that we've already have in hand, which is through Communications. And hopefully, we can build upon, I'm just confused on you're saying this is gonna be a city sponsored event calendar and I'm just confused about why we gotta have two different calendars. That just seems to be more confusing. But maybe we can build upon this process. I appreciate you trying to do this, but I do think it's helpful for us all to, you know, be aware of what's happening in the city. Especially when we are trying to plan things, you know, we won't try to um pull on the same resources, if you know what I mean. Cuz if you're having something, I don't wanna be having, I, if you're having a Own That Day, I definitely don't wanna plan a Yeek Festival the same day you're having Own That Day, because we're gonna need police and fire at the same event, and that can, that can be overwhelming to staff too. So I do appreciate you, this is, we do need to perfect this, but I don't know if we're gonna be able to get through that right now.
No. Is that, are you, are you done?
Yes, I yield, I yield.
Um and 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 you're absolutely right. Uh I think this is what work sessions are for, is sometimes to begin uh these discussions. And as you were talking, the Peachtree Road Race was the perfect example. Um it is put on by the Atlanta Track Club and I I think also the AJC. It's not a city sponsored event, but it certainly has an impact on the city. And as a cultural event, it is an insta, it is a cultural institution, right, that uh the city of Atlanta is proud to have. And so I think as we are as we are thinking about both coordinating our resources, but also building a sense of identity um here in our city, we know that there are, for example, a lot of members of uh fraternities and sororities. So the the Divine Nine, I think, really speaks, that 5K really speaks to the culture uh that we have here in the city. And so I think it's important as we think about events that and and perhaps we can have some delineation on our website calendar of what are city sponsored events. And we can have, you know, this event sponsored by this organization. But to really be thinking about of what events, whether it's a Divine Nine 5K or an Old Nation, or an Own That Day, things that really speak to the culture of our city and enhance that sense of identity for city of South Fulton residents. And 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 speaking of identity and culture, we are going to end, this is the final comment for this topic with our our professor, uh Dr. Mark Baker.
Thank you for recognizing me. Um sir, I think that uh, and really, I think you covered towards the end what my comment was. I think that many of these events, um we have partnered with those individuals. And I think our involvement has made it a city sponsored event, as Councilman Reeves said. When we're a part of it, and as the city manager contended, when we're a part of those events bringing resources to them, it it then becomes city sponsored events. I guess uh it's that partnership, because I think that, for example, the old, I think the Old National Merchants Association, I don't think police have ever been compensated, but I think that somebody has probably been affiliated with the event and took on some type of sponsorship with it. And that's how that, you know, the amalgamation of those partnerships came together. And I don't know how intimately um the city of Atlanta is with the Peachtree Road Race, for example. But I think that we need to going forward uh figure out these things, because I took a different position uh with organizations like Panhell because of our closeness to uh the events in the city of South Fulton. And we have an opportunity to chart our own course. We can figure it out as we go along. So I appreciate you bringing this up.
Thank you. Thank you for that, Dr. Baker. Um in the, in our, in our chat, uh Dr. Ral pointed out, one of the places that we do have the biggest conflict is when we are having back-to-school events. So hopefully, we will be able to work, Mr. Leffrich, uh with you more on that. I know that that can be uh seven districts having multiple back-to-school events. Can, that's that's usually uh very overwhelming for our staff. So let's be uh thinking about that as we go ahead. And again, we're in January, so the, you know, the farther out we can plan these things, the, you know, the more planning uh the better. And with that, we're gonna go on to, uh uh I'm gonna turn it back over to you uh, Mr. Adams. We are short on time, so I just wanna just take a few minutes and maybe just get a few comments. I'm going to combine these uh topics together. And there are, if you looked on that uh if you looked on that calendar, you did see Dr. Ral Wellness Days as well as um Kwanzaa and uh the summer break. And so uh there, these are, these are three different proposals. Uh I believe Dr. Baker is is co-sponsoring uh this Kwanzaa holiday with me, so I'm actually gonna start with that one. Uh we would like, I, it it is my intention to make Kwanzaa a a holiday as an African-American cultural celebration from December twenty-sixth to January first. There there would also be a summer week off, which would be the first week of July, from the fifth through the eighth. So we would be giving employees a week off in December and a week off in uh July, a summer break and a winter break. The the Kwanzaa holiday would be an actual holiday, so we would need a fist for that. Uh and it would come up in the twenty twenty-three budget, so we don't have to worry about it in this year's budget. The way that we, and we, and yes, we are submitting these through the legis, they are headed through the legislative process now. I believe that you all got um these items both from me and now in this public work, in this uh, in this public work session. The way that um the summer Fridays would work and the summer week off, right? So these are ideas that that I have, I've been thinking deeply about. How can we make our city more competitive? We've heard from Chief Meadows uh that we are competing with, uh our police departments are competing with other cities, but actually, all of our employees are competing with other cities. We have um had some issues attracting employees and and this is, I'm taking this page from uh Corporate America, my friends there, and and even in other nonprofits, uh New York University. Uh my best friend is is a dean there. They have summer Fridays uh off. And the idea that uh Ms. Graham and I came up with, and and I hate that she's not here today to provide further explanation, but is to create a new class of benefits, which are called Wellness Days. So these would not be formal holidays, which means that those public safety and other essential staff who have to work these days would not get time and a half or double time or overtime for these hours. We have created uh for these days, we have created numerous amounts of benefits for our public safety employees. We're looking at, um we have take-home cars, we have Gladiator pay, we have thousand-dollar checks. We're looking at uh benefits for living in the city for public works, I mean, for public safety employees. So this is, in in some sense, an effort to bring some equity to the benefits that we're offering all of our employees are important and invaluable. And so this is really more of a benefit for non-essential employees. Um and for for those people that are working in City Hall, we would close City Hall on uh Fridays in the summer, if if we were to pass these, we would close City Hall on Fridays in the summer from May to August. So May, June, July, and August, employees would have summer Friday, they would have the Fridays off in the summer if they wanna take long trips or just you know, have that personal day for their own mental wellness. And the same would also be true for that first week in July. It would be a special benefit for non-essential employees. This allows, this would actually create um around nineteen days off in the summer for our employees. It would be, I I think in addition to really being groundbreaking, I think that I and 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 uh HR Director Graham agrees, this would be a very attractive incentive um for people who are looking at applying for the city of South Fulton. And the best part about it is the way that it is constructed through this creation of a new wellness category. Uh it would be revenue neutral to the city. Um and I see Ms. Graham has joined us, and so I will ask uh if uh Madam City Manager, if she could just make a few comments about that.
Yes, sir, that's fine.
Good evening, um Mayor and council members and city manager. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Can you all hear me as well?
Yes.
Um I do apologize I wasn't in on earlier, Mayor. I'm dealing with my daughter being ill um this evening. But I just wanted to just piggyback on what you were saying, yes. So the mayor was introducing Wellness Days, and those Wellness Days would be the Fridays um May through August as Wellness Days. And again, where employees, we would write this up in the legislative, that if employees are able, based on their responsibilities based on their responsibilities and in scheduling, the city would be closed. So if they are available to take the day off, they will have those days off. If they were not available to take those days off, because it is something that requires them, like public safety positions, it would be a regular workday for those individuals. The thought process being is, there are things that do benefit the public safety that don't benefit the uh remaining employees. So the mayor wanted to kind of stretch something across the board that identifies essential employee um as well as essential employees, non-essential employees, with some type of break or wellness period. And as he mentioned, the Kwanzaa holiday, of course, would be from the twenty-sixth of December to the first of January. That would be for all employees, and that would be something we would look into the twenty-two, twenty-three budget um as he advised. So I provided documentation for the mayor. He wanted to have research on Wellness Days, Mental Health Days, and just kind of having days, especially during the height of the world right now with COVID, a lot of stressful things, with people having to like, even myself, having to be off with the care of family member, it's um, it can get pretty stressful on the employees. So he wanted to kind of offer something that would be beneficial for the employees as well as recognizing non-essential employees. So just wanted to kind of piggyback on what you were saying.
Thank you. Uh, we are over time for our uh zoning hearing, so we just, we're just going to go through these. I'm just gonna ask for a few minutes. I'm I'm gonna ask everyone to to maybe speak only once. Uh, this is a work session, so we will be able to talk about these uh these points further uh in the coming weeks before our twenty-fifth meeting. And with that, uh, I will recognize Mayor Pro Tim Willis.
So I'm just trying to get a clear understanding. You're saying you're proposing that we have nineteen days off. Employees, non-essential employees have nineteen days off in the summer, and you want to create seven days of Kwanzaa as a holiday as well? And so we won't have any city production or anything going on, work, I mean, any that the the residents won't be able to get any service during these nineteen days, or seven days of Kwanzaa, your proposal?
Yes, that is correct. Uh, there were, the the Kwanzaa falls between the twenty-sixth and the first. Uh, we have gotten into a really bad habit over the years of having council meetings in between Christmas and New Year's. So creating this um will give us a break, as well as all of our city employees. And I I think that it will create a, a, we are creating a culture where we are celebrating a work-life balance. But yes, that is, that is the proposal.
And and so have you looked at other creative ways to celebrate Kwanzaa besides uh shutting down work production or services to residents? Um, like, for example, um in Savannah, they have what you call Kwanzaa crawl. And where they are uh going to and featuring African American businesses every day of the week doing Kwanzaa. Um, and doing some type of ceremony at these businesses. Um, those, that's, that's my only question, is that we try to not create holidays and shut down uh services to uh residents uh for every single holiday. I do, I do believe in um, you know, commemorating them, um especially Kwanzaa. But I just, I am just a little, I just need more information, because I'm a little skeptical about shutting down service when we have already residents complaining about our service level is not up to par as is.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gumps? Councilwoman Gumps, are you there? Okay, we're gonna go to-
I'm sorry, I am here. I was speaking on mute, so I apologize. Um, thank you for recognizing me. What cities or other municipalities have implemented something similar to this that we could research? Um, to just kind of get some feedback on it? And then also too, have you looked at the financial impact that this may possibly have um on the city? I know Councilwoman Willis just mentioned about city services. But uh I'm very curious as to what other cities have kind of instituted something similar to this.
All right, so the, a- again, with the financial impact, the way that we've written this, these Wellness Days, it would be revenue neutral. I believe that we will be the first city in Georgia to offer this um sort of package. There are a lot of private corporations that are offering this. So again, it's not just about, you know, creating these holidays for holiday's sake, but trying to come up with some creative ways to be competitive uh with the budget that we have. And Ms. Sadler Jones, did you wanna talk about uh the city in Texas where you came from?
Yes, um, the mayor had shared, you know, his idea with me. And I told him that when I worked for a city in the Houston area, um, I mean, although the city worked forty hours a week, they would work Monday through Thursday from eight until five. But then Friday was eight to twelve. So it was a um, almost a shorter workday. And employees enjoyed it because they were able, you know, to go out of town. If they wanted to leave early, they were able to run their errands before everybody else got off of work. You know, they could do their grocery shopping. And I mean, it was just uh something that the city instituted, really, which really ended up being a good morale booster for employees, because they enjoyed getting off at twelve noon on Fridays. So I told the mayor, I said, you know, I mean, I I would think that, you know, employees would be open to something like this. But um, you know, based upon the way it was explained to me, you know, as long as it's revenue neutral, I I mean, I think it would be a good benefit, and it's specifically for a summertime, when we know that employees are used to, you know, being able to go on vacation and do things like that. Um, so I mean, it's done other places, but not specifically, you know, maybe like this situation.
Thank you. Did you have anything else, Councilwoman Gumps?
Um, no, that's fine. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, uh, Dr. Rao.
Um, I'd too would like more information on the financial impact. I think um the model that was proposed uh where you might look at half a day would be something that I'd be open to entertaining. I do think the number of days seems on the high end. So I definitely would like uh more information to come back. And I would like to see how this also impacts um our essential workers from the standpoint that uh how would they benefit from this, because they're, they're twenty-four, seven, you know, how, how, whatever. If this brought back as a recommendation, I would want them to equally benefit. And I don't know that they, I would just wanna see how the, you know, our public safety personnel in particular, with fairness, kind of scenario.
Thank you. And we're gonna close out with Doc, uh, Doctor. Doctor Reeves, I'm gonna speak things that aren't as though they were. Mr. Reeves, Councilman Reeves.
Well, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, I guess this question is for uh Chief, and I just wanna ask this. When are the alcohol licenses due uh to the city?
The alcohol license are being um aside as we speak. I've just signed off on a batch of them the other day, and so they'll be going out. And all of the businesses should have them by the end of this month.
Okay, right, but the application and stuff is due by December the thirty-first?
I'm sorry?
Are the applications due by December the thirty-first?
They've, all, all of the renewals have been submitted, but yes, they are due by December thirty-first.
Okay, so subsequently, they would now be due on the twenty-third if we do the holiday?
Jermaine?
Yeah, I, I, I was- I'm sorry, they're due on, they're due on December fifteenth. I apologize.
Okay, all right, then, okay, all right, all right. That, that killed the question. Thank you, sir.
I got you.
I was, I was trying to uh to to follow you, uh, uh, Mr. Reeves. But you were asking about if we instituted this Kwanzaa holiday, would it affect the uh application for business license or alcohol license?
The alcohol license, right, which could create a problem, because it's, you know, everybody's cheering, you know? So if they don't get that in, then they won't have a a license. And so they, some people, you know, wait to that last minute, or during that period of time, they uh, uh, to get it in. And uh, so that could have created the problem or an issue for some. I was just bringing up a little point.
All right, thank you, and and noted. Uh, and he, and he did say they were due on the fifteenth. I'm gonna call Ms. Graham to close this out, uh.
So just in closing, um, I know that Councilwoman Dr. Rao, I wanted to know about the essential employees as well. So one of the thought process that Mayor had with the essential employees is that we do offer things for the essential employees, like, for example, the grants that come through right now where they are benefiting from the thousand dollars. That's one of the things that non-essential employees don't benefit from or don't nece, don't receive. So we were trying to find things where it may not be beneficial across the board for everyone, but we're looking for something that you'll benefit at this time, this group will benefit at this time, and then in Kwanzaa being one that everybody will benefit from, so that we could keep it as um payroll neutral as possible.
Awesome. All right, and with, I'm gonna, I'm going to skip the, I I hate that we, that we won't get to talk a a bit about the council uh committees, but I've talked about it publicly. Uh, we, I know we'll talk about it. I hope that we will be able to talk about it more uh privately. The idea is just, if you'll just leave that, uh, if you'll scroll down real quick for me, um, and just leave it there where the list of the committees are, the, the, the seven committees. So uh in, in cities uh of our size, Macon, Atlanta, Augusta, uh Savannah, these places, they're, they have committees that are public and public facing uh where we drive agenda, we drive legislation through these council committees. And it could be possible, right? We are actually only obligated to have one council meeting per month. So it might be possible after creating these committees and making some other changes to eliminate the work session and then have individual committee meetings based on topics. So people who that, people who are interested in particular topics would be able to workshop legislation regarding those topics over several months. And that would be true not only for uh council members who might have particular interests in these items, but it would also be true for constituents who are, you know, particularly interested in these items. And so like, that, that is all I will say about that. I will say um that HB ten nineteen, uh, the, the, the revised charter gives me the power to create these committees and then just appoint council people to them, right? That is, that is what happens in, again, like cities like Macon and Augusta. The mayor assigns council members to committees. It is my hope uh that we would actually uh be able, that I would like for council members to select committees on their own volition uh based in uh seniority order, which is, you know, how it happens in Congress and how it happens in the state legislature. People go through these committees, but they are chosen um in seniority order. So so council members are able to pick the committees that they are most passionate about. We're gonna take a few comments. I see in the queue, in this order, um, Dr. Rao, Mayor Pro Tim Willis, and Dr. Baker. And and with, and we're gonna take just those three and then move to this last discussion item. So uh, Dr. Rao.
So if um, and this may be interpretation, while you have the authority to recommend an appointment or the creation of these boards and committees, they also have to be confirmed by the city council, is my read of the charter. So I just want clarification on that. And second, from a staffing point, we have various boards as it stands now that are completely autonomous um that residents participate in. And so my question is, from a staffing point, has the city manager staff looked at how something like this would be staffed? Kidna?
Thank, well, Councilmember Rao, I mean, he, the mayor did provide me the proposed list. Uh, you know, we even went through, and I said, well, you know, maybe you wanna add this to that area. We did, we have not specifically discussed um the staff and, you know, what their responsibilities will be for any of these, these boards. No, ma'am, we have not.
So um, I I would hope that, and and I don't know if the city attorney is on in terms of how this, the process for creating any of these boards, because all of the other boards we've created have been created via ordinance and then had the vote of the council. So that's my first question. And two, I just think we need to, you know, as we kind of think through some of these things that have been raised today, um, I hope we'll go uh deeper um at our retreat to kind of figure this out, because I know right now, we don't even have all the boards that we have created staffed. Um, and given our shortage in staff across the city, I just wonder how realistic or practical this might be.
Thank you. Councilwoman Willis.
And and thank you. And so the charter does call for, yes, you do have a right to establish boards and 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 committees, but the council will have to confirm those. And um, when you did bring this up, I did um confer with the city attorney, and he did um advise that this would have to have um city council confirmation. Um, I am open-minded to having a discussion, uh, but I do think that we need to vet this a little closer or in more detail at the retreat. I would recommend that you get uh the clerk or the city manager from the cities who use this type of structure with our same form of government. Um, uh, so City of Atlanta would not be a good idea, because they are full-time employees, and they spend all day in these committees. Um, uh, and sometimes I chime in to to listen to some of their committee hearings. Um, Savannah, I'm almost positive they do not have committees, so I'm not really sure where that information came from. But uh, the only city with city council manager form of government that I am aware of that may have committees is the city of Douglasville. And so at the retreat, um, I would like to ask um Ms. Sadler Jones, if you could reach out to the city manager, and Corey Adams, if you could reach out to the clerk, and maybe have them zoom in and give this council a little bit more direction on how this uh, this committee structure works for them. I am in agreement with Councilmember Rao. We have a very, we have a lot of boards that are not fully staffed. We, this is gonna require um staffing, and um I don't wanna put more um pressure on staff. And I definitely, and we are also part-time, um, we just have to remember, we are part-time as well. The charter clearly states that. So we need to make sure we are giving part-time uh service uh when it uh relates to legislation. And I haven't, I'm gonna be honest with you, most of us haven't. So I I just, Mayor would like to, you know, ask you to, let's take this into uh, to the retreat. The city manager and the city clerk is respons, uh, once we give them a date that we can all agree on, they typically plan our retreats. I mean, and um, I'm looking forward to them bringing that uh planned retreat back to this council. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. Baker. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Baker. Dr. Baker, you're muted. Going once? Going twice? Alright, um, I'm just gonna say a, 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 a couple of closing comments. Thank you all so much. Uh, first, on the issue of um, the charter, it's, it, I, I have a different reading of the charter. That's not my understanding about who can and cannot appoint committees. Are you there, Dr. Baker? Are you taking your hand down? Are, are you ready to speak?
It's fine, are you?
Um, thank you. Uh, so, so I, 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 I have a, a, a different opinion about that. However, whether, whether I can do it unilaterally or not, it is my hope that we will do this together. I think very often um, we have seen things come to the agenda quickly that may have needed more thought. We have seen um, where we have made something illegal or a finable offense and it's had a noticeable impact on our court system, uh, because we, we just did not think through all of the impacts. We didn't workshop things um, enough. And so, the idea is that this would actually slow down some of our legislation and give uh, more time and thought. We've had issues where two different council members are working on um, and legislation addressing the same thing. And it's not maybe until we get to a council meeting that we see on the agenda, there are these two things. So, hopefully, I think that, that having things go through committees uh, would help us work through some of these uh, processes. We are unique in our situation. We are a city manager form of government. We are by far the largest city manager form of government in the state, right? Uh, by, by population, by land area. Uh, so it's, we, we have a sort of a hybrid uh, system with unique challenges. Thank you for correcting me about Savannah, Mayor Pro Tim Willis. I will correct you about Atlanta. Um, though they are paid well, Atlanta's city charter actually lists their council people as part-time. And many of them uh, do have uh, full-time jobs. And so, I do think that, that staffing and all of these things are, are in, um, things to take into consideration. Again, as you see in uh, here, I propose to not even begin this through April, until April first. This is something that I believe needs to be worked shop as much as other legislation. I will just ask, since it came up, do we have any more information, Madam City Manager, about a possible date for our retreat?
Yes, sir. I, um, when I sent out the uh, information on administrative actions on January the ninth, I included a uh, proposed or tentative date I would like for the council to consider. And that date, let me go to my calendar, is February the twenty-third through the twenty-fifth. Wednesday, February twenty-third, Thursday, February twenty-four, Friday, February twenty-fifth. But the city clerk um, and the assistant city manager and I are actually meeting on Thursday. And we were gonna be sending out a doodle poo uh, poll, pardon me, that we've uh, done, you know, in the past to see what your availability is. And then we will use that to guide us on what that, that date is. But that is an initial date that we would like for you to consider. Of course, every time we're trying to plan these type of events, we're looking at, you know, if there's a school, you know, we, I know some of our school districts have winter breaks and and, and holidays and things like that. We were trying to work around that, but that is an initial date for council's consideration. But we will send out a poll to uh, look at some other dates if that one doesn't work.
Alright, thank you. Um, and then this last thing before we head into this uh, zoning hearing is just a, a, a quick conversation. We have a vote coming up about uh, the mayor pro temp. This is a proposal to amend the charter for the process of selecting the mayor pro temp. And I just wanna say a little bit about it. First off, it, um, it will not affect the vote on January twenty-fifth, right? We, we have to have two reads before we affect a char- a charter change. It may be um, not allowed. It may be something that we need to send through the charter, um, uh, the Charter Review Commission. But it does, it does ask us to take a look at changing that process. And, and, and here is the reason why. There, I really want us, um, I, I, I'm really committed to staff development of our council. And I want to make sure that every member of council has an opportunity to be mayor pro temp. Now, in reality, uh, the, if, if, if the mayor is just a figurehead position, then the mayor pro temp is even less than that, right? It, it only, um, it only comes into play in the absence or incapacity. So, you know, um, if something were to happen to me, it would become very important. But uh, otherwise, it is possible that the next mayor pro temp will never be, will never get to act in that position at all over the next year, unless you have a mayor who on purpose um, takes leaves of absences or sends that mayor pro temp to fill in, uh, to get that experience that they need. I know that it would have uh, been, I think, very beneficial for me. I've been on this council for five years and I never got to be uh, the mayor pro temp. So, I wanna make sure that that doesn't happen for any other council meeting, uh, any other council members. If you'll just scroll up, um, uh, Mr. Adams, this uh, this proposes to have the mayor pro temp be selected. So, it amends uh, section uh, three point two-nine and um, uh, another set, three point eleven B of the charter. But it, it proposes that we would select a mayor pro temp based on seniority. So that the most senior person who has never gotten the opportunity to serve in that position would have that opportunity. It would elim- it would take the politics out of it. It would take the confusion out about that we've had about when the election happens, because now on, at midnight on January first, the next most senior person who has not had that opportunity uh, would be the mayor pro temp. And so, if we were, again, if we were to adopt this as a policy, um, we would have to, we would have to vote that way on January twenty-fifth. I do not get a vote, uh, but it is, it is my hope that you would consider this policy if we were to adopt it. I believe the most senior person um, not to have served would be uh, Mr. Cory Reeves, who's headed into his third year as a councilperson. Uh, and so, the order would be, were we to adopt this policy, uh, Cory Reeves, then uh, Councilwoman Natasha Williams, uh, who is more senior than Councilman J.C. Sebastian, just by virtue of her winning her election thirty days before him. And so, twenty twenty-two, Councilman Reeves would be the mayor pro temp. Twenty twenty-three, Councilwoman Williams would be the mayor pro t- uh, pro temp. And twenty twenty-four, uh, Councilman Sebastian would be the mayor pro temp. Everybody would get an opportunity and then we would start it uh, over again. Uh, and with that, I'm just gonna open up the floor for a few quick comments, starting with Mayor Pro Tim Willis.
So, um, my que- this is a question for Legal. Um, so the charter already states that no one council member can serve consecutively. So, we already have to elect someone new every year. Um, do we have to um, change the charter to, or do, can we just make a, I know, uh, I'm working on updating or amending the administrative ordinance? Can this uh, be a part of the administrative ordinance if we decided to go this route or take this recommendation where we just, um, the, the next senior person on council, uh, becomes mayor pro temp? Being that the charter already states that we should elect one uh, every year, and it can't, a person can't serve consecutively. I think the only thing that this recommendation is stating uh, from the mayor is that we should rotate it to the next senior person every year.
Councilwoman Willis, Mayor Pro Tim, uh, when this topic was first uh, brought up, depending on what the council decided, will depend on whether or not, and I think uh, Mayor Khalid mentioned whether or not this can be done as possible resolution through agreement of council, or if you're changing terms and things of that nature, then have to follow the charter text amendment. Um, you are correct that the charter already does build in, um, the election has to occur every year. And then, um, if the council decides, say, for example, every year based on seniority and who has yet to serve, uh, that will follow that model, then you're not in conflict with anything, because you wouldn't uh, be having somebody that would be serving more than two or more successive terms. And then that would be occurring each year. So, you wouldn't even have to touch uh, that section. Uh, but that's something I, like I said, I'd have to wait. I was waiting to hear uh, how the mayor and council uh, decided which course of action they wanted to go before I really um, delved into what it would in, uh, entail, whether or not it's gonna be just a resolution or whether or not there would perhaps be some type of a charter text amendment required.
Right. So, the charter dictates two things. It dictates that we elect someone every year, and it also dictates that we can't choose the same council member uh, consecutively. For example, I was the mayor pro temp this year, so there's no way I can be mayor pro temp next year. So, it already dictates that. Um, but the only thing council member, I mean, the only thing Mayor Khalid is asking is that when we do choose the next person, it is chosen by, based on, based on seniority. So, it's not in conflict with what the charter is saying. He's just adding another caveat to it. He's just saying, um, when we vote, let it be the next senior person. So, my question is, can we just do that by way of resolution instead of changing the charter?
Um, just for, just for clarity, according to the charter, it says that no councilman should serve two or more successive terms. So, someone could be elected two successive terms. Uh, but like I said, if, or like you mentioned, if the council were to uh, adopt some type of procedural rules to say, okay, at the concluded every year that uh, considering the next election cycle, we'll take uh, seniority and who's yet to serve into consideration, then uh, you wouldn't run afoul or have to go through um, a text amendment, i- i- a, the text amendment process.
Okay. Are you?
Um, duh, uh, Mr. Reeves, Councilman Reeves.
Okay, so, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So, essentially too is, you just said, uh, uh, Attorney Hammond, that a councilman can serve two or more. So, they can serve back-to-back terms as possible with that charter, uh, as it reads now.
It says two con- it says two or more successive terms would be one year, one year.
Correct. So, subsequently, just say, for instance, on the twenty-fifth, we could reelect Mayor Pro Tim Willis back to that position.
The charter would authorize that. Well, if that, if that was the will of the um, elected body.
Right. So, this proposed charter amendment will ensure that it does go to the next senior person on council who has not served in that position before. So, this would need to be a charter change.
The, the one as, 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 the strikeouts that are reflected on the screen would be a charter amendment. But if the council for, for procedural purposes, that when the time for the um, one year comes up, that they say we will take seniority who's yet to serve in consideration, then uh, you would be in compliance with the charter.
And so, if I could just, if I could just clarify, uh, uh, Mr. Reeves, yeah, this, this would actually, this change would actually eliminate the election, so that it is an automatic selection. And it would, yes, eliminate the, the possibility of both someone serving two consecutive years, or what is also possible now is, you know, two council people could, could switch off, right? So, I could be it one year and then you could be it the other year. And then if we have the votes, I could be it again the next year. And then you could be it the year after that. And other people would never get the opportunity to serve. So, that is, that is what it's hoping to prevent. But again, um, it won't be in place January twenty-fifth by the time we take the vote. So, whether or not this passes as a formal amendment, we could, as a group, just agree to do this as a, as a policy. I think that what we've seen, uh, we went through, we've gone through this with benefits, right, is that uh, we made an agreement around benefits for council that was not memorialized on paper. And when enough people turned over, no one knew that that agreement had been made. So, that is, you know, that is the point of writing things in paper and making laws always, right, is to memorialize things uh, for, for generations to come. But again, it is, it is a choice that we could make um, as a council or that you all.
Correct. And so, this is basically a fair and balanced approach to ensure that everyone uh, grows in their capacity as a colleague or a council member serving the city of South Fulton.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Alright, and with that, I am uh, going to ask that we hold executive session items. We are forty-five minutes over and we can have an executive session after the zoning hearing. Is that correct?
Mayor, if you moved, uh, I, do a mo- do a motion and get a vote on that, then you could not do that.
Alright, so I will, I will entertain such a motion.
So, can we make that motion? Cause we typically do not vote in work sessions. So, can we just get a consensus on us doing that? Um, and that would be, that would suffice, um, Attorney, uh, Hammond?
Well, as, as it relates to the work, you can get your consensus, uh, that you have in se- executive session, move to zoning.
Let me try, let me try it a different way. The, the agenda says, e- executive assess- executive session if needed. So, I can just entertain a motion to close this work session. I just.
That we close the work session.
Executive session at the next meeting, which, because an executive session if needed is also on that agenda. Is that correct, Mr. Reeves?
Yes, that is correct.
Second, thank you.
Alright, will you carry that vote, Mr. Clerk?
It's a motion, uh,
The motion was to um, close the work session. And I vote yea.
Okay, I was on uh, mute. We had a motion to close or adjourn the work session. Roll call vote, Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Goms?
Yeah.
Mayor Pro Tim Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker? Councilmember Baker, we are adjourned at six forty-seven PM.
Do we need to just remain here? Are you go- are we gonna reconvene in this?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's, that's at your pleasure. Uh, the only thing I ask is that you switch over in the novice agenda system from the uh, work session to the zoning public hearing. Um, but you can call the next meeting to order at your pleasure.
Um, before we call the next meeting to order, are we still, are we still live to the public? Cause I have an internal question.
Yes, we are.
We are still live.
Okay, thank you.
Would, so I'm going to go ahead and call the next meeting to order.
Okay, I can carry the roll call. Is this okay, Mr. Chair?
Call the roll, yes.
The Honorable Khalid Kamau, Mayor?
Present.
The Honorable Catherine F. Rhon, District One. The Honorable Carmelita Gons. The Honorable Carmelita Gomes, District Two. The Honorable Helen Z. Willis, District Three. The Honorable J.C. Sebastian, District Four.
Present.
The Honorable Corey A. Reeves, District Five.
Accountant Four.
The Honorable Natasha Williams, District Six.
Present.
And the Honorable Mark Baker, District Seven. Mister Mayor, you have a call.
All right, would you stand on the next or the first item?
Yes, the first item is rezoning variance and modification cases for presentation and public hearing only. The first is Z twenty one dash zero one six, request to rezone from A G one to C U P for thirty six single family homes, this is located at Zero West Stubbs Road and thirty three fifteen West Stubbs Road, located in District Two. I believe Mrs. uh Jackson or Mrs. Kiefer will be doing the presentation.
Yes, good evening, um council members, I have received a request in writing from the applicant to defer this item to the March public hearing, so council has the option, I guess, to um hear the item tonight or defer it to the March meeting.
Awesome, I will entertain a motion to defer.
I'd like to make a motion to defer to our March meeting.
Sergeant.
Any discussion?
Well, Mister, Mister Mayor, uh, because this is public hearing only.
You have the opening hearing?
Yeah, you do have to, um, if you want to hear, we do have uh people who submitted public comment, um. But let me, let me, before I say that, um, uh, if you may, I, I would like the uh city attorney, um, do they have to vote to defer in the zoning public hearing since we typically don't take any votes in this meeting?
I'll allow Mr. McClennan to speak on that.
Thank you, this is Reginald McClennan, Assistant City Attorney, they would have to vote to defer that to the next um to the next work session um for a uh public hearing at that point in time.
Thank you.
And Mister McClennan, could I also ask a follow up question, would it be, if we vote to defer uh to that later date, would we also be voting to hold the comments to that date? Can we hold the public comments since we're not really hearing the item today?
That is correct, you would be holding those comments.
Thank you. Any other uh folks for discussion?
And so just for the record, I think I had a motion by Councilmember Gomes, I don't know if I got a second.
Second by Ral.
All right, thank you.
All right, uh, there is no further discussion, uh please call the, the vote, Mister Clerk.
This is a motion to defer this case, Z twenty one dash zero one six to the March uh zoning hearing. It's a motion by Councilmember Gomes, seconded by Councilmember Ral, roll call, Councilmember Ral.
Yes.
Councilmember Gomes?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Willis? Yes, thank you, Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Councilmember Baker? That item is deferred six zero.
All right, please sound the next item.
The next item, and actually, there are two companion items, the first item is M twenty one dash zero zero seven, request for modification of Z twenty eight, Z two thousand eight dash zero zero two three, conditions one A to allow a one hundred and forty six unit townhome development instead of the previously permitted one hundred and fourteen unit townhome development. Condition one C to reduce the required heated floor area from two thousand square feet to either eighteen hundred, eighteen fifty square feet or sixteen fifty square feet. Condition two A to replace the approved site plan. Condition three A to coordinate with G dot for future traffic improvements. This is located as Zero Campbellton Roads located in District One, and this case was deferred at the December fourteenth meeting.
So, thank you, um, can we scroll down a little bit to this presentation, please? Thank you, next slide, please. So, this is a zoning modification that was approved, uh it's for, it's a, it's a modification to a zoning case that was approved in two thousand eight by Fulton County. Um, it allows one hundred and fourteen townhomes, and the applicant would like to increase the number of allowed townhomes actually to one hundred and forty six. We received an updated letter of intent from the applicant. The current minimum heated floor area is two thousand square feet, they are offering two different floor plans, one will have one thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet, the other will, will have um, one thousand eight hundred and fifty square feet, and the applicant would also like to make some amendments to the site plan. We actually received a new site plan from the applicant today, so the condition will reference the site plan received by Community Development and Regulatory Affairs on January eleventh, twenty twenty two, and the updated site plan includes some, some off street parking, and it will also reference the fact that there are going to be coordination needed between the Georgia Department of Transportation um in the city for traffic improvements along Campbellton Road. Concurrently with this item is a request for a variance. Um, to put it succinctly, the zoning code requires a berm to be constructed as a buffer between the proposed development and the traffic on Campbellton Road. The Georgia Department of Transportation, who manages Campbellton Road, noted that their berm was impacting site distance, and so they have instructed the developer that the berm would have to be removed, but as you all know, the city and the Department of Transportation are in the process of creating a traffic light at the intersection of Stonewall Town and Campbellton Road that will align with this development. So if the traffic light is installed, it's possible that the Georgia Department of Transportation might allow the developer to maintain the berm, and so the condition on that one that will be at the next meeting will most likely say something along the lines of the applicant is allowed to remove portions of the berm if required by the Georgia Department of Transportation, set coordination concerning the traffic light is still going on. And so we're going to dive into this a little bit more, next slide, please. So the site is currently zone T R based on the um zoning decision that we um spoke about earlier that was approved under Fulton County, and the future land use is community live work. Um, so the proposal fits into the future land use plan for density, but not the allowed zoning designations, but as I mentioned, it was already approved under Fulton County to be zone T R, and the staff recommendation on this is approval with conditions, next slide, please. So here is kind of where the site is, where the road bends, it is Campbellton Road, and then the road under that one going from north to south is Stonewall Town Road, next slide, please. And so on the left, you can see the future land use map, you can see that it's, the future land use is community live work, and then on the right, you see the zoning map, you can see that it's zoned T R, next slide, please. And here is an image of the site plan, so are we able to zoom in just a little bit? So. Yeah, that's perfect, and so what you'll see here in this site plan is that the pink line is the site distance, and then the, and then the gray um area towards the bottom of the development is the location of the berm. And so the berm actually, right now, it was constructed already by a previous developer who didn't complete the project. So what you'll see on this site plan is that the, the berm currently goes from one end of the development to all the way to the other end of the, the other end of the development. And so what the berm does is it kind of intersects this pink line here, and the pink line is the site distance. So what that means is that if I'm at the entrance to the development, and I look to the left, G dot requires me to be able to see a certain amount of distance so that I'm able to make wise decisions as a driver and to cert- decide when to turn, when there aren't cars coming, so I don't get hit. And so what is happening is that G dot is coordinating with the city to install a traffic light here and realign the intersection, so Stonewall Town, um, the road kind of south of this is going to interline with this intersection, it's going to be signalized, and so what will happen is the traffic light will tell me when I'm able to turn, so the site distance won't be as important. So that's kind of where we are, with this one, next slide, please. I think that's the last slide for this, for this one. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, do we have speakers for or against this item?
Yes, sir, um, first you would need to open up the public hearing, um, well, and I guess the um applicant is on as well, so, but you would need to open up the public hearing to hear from both parties.
Very much, you see, this is why everyone should get to be Mayor Pro Tim, we're going to open up the public hearing.
I, I think first is the applicant, uh Mister Rothman, um.
Yeah, Mister Mayor, members of council, Happy New Year, um, I'm Steve Rothman, presenting the applicant. Uh, my address is twenty eight forty nine Pacers Ferry Road, um, I think Marissa did a great job of explaining the uh request. Um, as she said, this project is partially built, the roads are in, the sewers, the waters, the water's in, it was originally built for a hundred and forty four units, which is all we're asking for, it almost seems as if there was a typo when it went to one fourteen. No one can figure out why one fourteen, so the, my client, Rock Haven Homes, and Brad Hughes is really Rock Haven Homes, and he's on, um, just wants to, to build the homes where the roads are already laid out, the way the lot pattern is already laid out. Uh, we don't want to take down the berm, G dot is asking us to, if we don't have to, we don't want to. Um, and I guess with that, this is, we've been working with Sandtown since the fall, really, on this, and the district council member. The reason for the late site plan yesterday is because we met with them last Thursday, um. There was additional requests, they had been brought up before about interspersing guest parking throughout the development, um, so we've done that, and so I think with that, we agree with the conditions, we've had a great construction process with the community, we've been at it a while, we finished last Thursday with that, and so with that, we'd ask for your support, and I'm here to answer questions, as is Brad Hughes on behalf of Rock Haven Homes. And that completes my presentation.
Okay, Mister Mayor?
Yes.
We did receive a number of uh, well, a few uh comments regarding this case, um. I guess the first uh person, and I believe she's on the call, she wishes to submit live public comment, is Miss Sonia Patterson, Miss Patterson, are you on the call? Miss Patterson? I thought she was on the call, but I do have a, a number of uh forms that I've received, so I'll just start reading them into the record.
Now, are these, are these for or against?
You have, you have one in support, and the rest are in opposition.
All right, let's hear the one in support first.
Okay. I'll use the eight twenty five for the proponents. Okay, this is uh from Mister Harvey Davis, who lives in District One. He says, I would like to express my overwhelming support of M twenty one dash zero zero seven, question for modification to Z two thousand eight dash zero zero two three conditions. The commu- community has met with this development team for a number of months, who was very flexible and has made quite a few changes to the project to address every concern voiced by stakeholders in the surrounding community and District One where this residential project is. The primary reason that they are requesting a zoning modification is at some point in revisions to documents during administrative turnover, apparently there was a Scrivener's Era inadvertently reducing the number of units from one forty four to one fourteen. What was unfortunate was in the early construction prep, which was consistent with the zoning, all of the utilities, water, sewer, electricity, et cetera, were buried underground for one hundred and forty four units, not one fourteen. When the delayed project resumed, the era was discovered. To have to dig up and reinstall the utilities for a new site plan would be an extreme and costly hardship for the developer and impact their financial feasibility model. As a member of the Sandtown Community Association for twenty plus years, we have engaged developers to seek win wins to foster quality development consistent with blueprint Sandtown. We carefully leveraged our experience to protect residents while shepherding the development that will come. Our community has sought to overcome the area's reputation of saying no to everything, which stifled many of the things the community actually wants. As a result of the years planning, Fulton Commissioners and now council members that represent the Sandtown community, Catherine Ral, District One, Carmelita Gomes, District Two, encouraged developers to meet with our organization, who is an umbrella team for residents and homeowners. Our council members have had the opportunity to sit in some of these meetings and hear the pulse of the community. At the end of the day, our decades of zoning experience, knowledge of zoning law, and work with the A R C and G dot have been a catalyst for quality growth in Sandtown, including the new Publix in Sandtown Crossing. Early on with L C I grant from A R C, we now see the fruit and implementation of long awaited infrastructure like the sidewalks on Campbellton Road, the state highway project this project is on. We are collaborated with both county and municipal public works and G dot, and most recent achievements is the nearly completed nine million dollar roundabout at Campbellton and Boat Rock, which is one of the mixed-use commercial nodes we established and were codified years ago. My colleagues understand the balance between established neighborhoods and the rights of undeveloped property owners. I have personally attended four or more virtual meetings with this development, developers team, which was a pleasant experience as they have bent over backwards, tweaking the site plan and amenities addressing a met, addressing all reasonable community concerns. That's it for uh those in support.
All right, I'm going to uh open it up for council discussion?
But you want to hear the, those in opposition?
I'm sorry, I thought there was one in support.
Yeah, and then the rest are in opposition.
Okay.
Okay, let me just check one last time, it's, it's Mrs. Sonia Patterson, is she on? Okay, not hearing her name, I'll read her comment into the record. This comment is from Sonia Patterson, who lives on Haley Circle in District Two. Uh, she states, M twenty one dash zero zero seven zoning request. Hello, Honorable Mayor and Councilman. This request is to increase the number of homes from one fourteen to one forty six, please deny. They want to make the homes smaller and jam more into this already congested area. Does not go along with the existing home sites in the area, and it may negatively affect the home values of the existing homes. Also, this is a very congested area, so adding another almost fifty home sites with two to three cars per home is not a good idea, please deny. She also states with regard to the concurrent variant C V twenty one dash zero zero seven, please deny this request to decrease the berm required by the Sandtown overlay, please deny. We constituents are very concerned with the maintenance of the green spaces in, here in our city. The request to reduce the berm will negatively impact our ecology and our health. There have been many studies that show that city densities must take into consideration green spaces in order to keep the ecology balanced. We already have the water treatment plant here in District Two, making us subject to very bad smells from time to time. I hope that we are able to maintain our green spaces, please deny. I hope that we are able to maintain our green spaces. Please deny. Sincerely, Sonia Patterson. Next is from Linda Collins. Regarding M twenty one dash zero zero seven. She lives on Morning Creek in District Five. The square footage should not be reduced since many people spend more time at home. And the reduction of square footage may prevent the growth from individuals. Having a, an office or hobby space in their home. In addition to all the building. Traffic, are traffic studies done? The city of South Fulton needs infrastructure improvements in the whole city before the city continues with additional buildings. And then lastly is Diane Johnson who lives on Vernier Drive in District Five. She states, uh, you said you are going to reduce the houses and lot sizes. When they are already small enough. By making the lot smaller, the houses will be built closer together. For example, if my neighbor, my neighbor's house catches fire, then mine will too. And that is the comments.
All right, and what is next?
So you can, um, you have to close the public hearing or allow the applicant time to rebuttal.
I do see Mr. Rothman's hand raised. Would you like to rebut, Mr. Rothman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will very briefly, um. Just to respond to those comments, first of all, there was the. Concern that we are increasing the number of lots or home sites. And I wanted to reiterate. That the home sites were approved by Fulton County. Before the downturn in two thousand and eight, the infrastructure was put in under the Fulton County regulations. And so we're really not asking to increase the home sites. It's that the regulation, when it transferred over to South Fulton. Took it from one forty four, which had already been built. But they never built the homes because of the downturn, but they had already put in the infrastructure. Um, and it, the zoning took it down to one fourteen. So we're not asking to go beyond what has already been built. And so that's, I, I would like the council and the person who was concerned to know that this developer is not looking to cram. As many homes as they can in. They just want to put a, a home on top of the. Water and electrical and all the infrastructure that sewers that have already been piped to those lots that were already. Subdivided, uh, when it was at Fulton County. Uh, secondly, there was a concern about, well, I just want to say we've worked closely with the community. Submitted elevations, we've increased the amount of brick facade and natural stone facade. Uh, on those elevations, which will be part of the condition of zoning. Um, the two thousand square foot minimum was not something that was originally there. So again, we're just trying to fit. This development with what was originally approved and then developed in Fulton County. Um, and then finally with regard to the berm, we're all for that. It would be so much easier to keep the berm. G dot is telling us for traffic and life safety, you might have to remove a portion of it, but as Marissa said in her present. To the extent that traffic signal going in means we don't have to remove it. If G dot doesn't make us cut a piece of that berm out at the intersection. We won't do it. So it's only to the extent as Marissa said, that G dot requires us to do it. So I think with that, I'll, I'll keep my comments brief and, and that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, is there any other comment against in the balance of time? Or how much time do we have left on the clock, I guess?
Yes, I read all of the. Yes, I read all of the, uh, opposition comments into the record. Um, so you can close it whenever you deem appropriate.
I will, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. And this is. And, uh, uh, I'm going to open up now for council comments. I want to say I, uh, having a problem with my queue, so if you all will just raise your hands. Um, I will recognize you as the hands are raised, starting with, uh. The district whose council, uh, the council person whose district this is in, Dr. Ral.
Thank you very much. Um, for the benefit of the public, I would ask, um, Ms. Jackson or Mr. Rothman. To share the elevations that had been agreed upon, um, as a result of that meeting. Um, and I would like to see this plan that shows the additional parking that was requested. For guest parking in the community. Can somebody bring that up on the screen?
Yes, ma'am. I have those documents. They weren't included in the presentation because I just got them today. I can share them if I have permission from the clerk's office to share my screen or, okay.
I want the record to show what was agreed upon based on those meetings with community and so. Uh, I want the record to reflect that before I take any action.
Yes, ma'am. Hold on just a second. So. Can you guys see my screen?
Yes.
Okay.
Could you, can you point out, um. On this, the additional parking area where the amenities are as well as the facades. The new elevations.
Yes, ma'am. So I'm going to zoom in a bit. So this is the site plan. So this is the site plan. Not cooperating all the way. These are some of the off-street parking spaces here that were incorporated. And then if we scroll down, there are some more. And then there are some more off-street parking spaces here that were incorporated. So here is where the amenity area is going to go. Um, the amenity area is going to include a pool and a cabana slash clubhouse. Um, the clubhouse is going to include a kitchen, a meeting area. And restrooms with changing areas. So this is the site plan we received from applicant today. And then also, these are the elevations we received from the applicant.
Those aren't the, those aren't the elevations that I received from the community.
Okay, are, Mr. Rothman, are these the elevations you sent me today?
Those are some of them. I think if you scroll down, there's a lot of them. There, let's see. Let me look at the rest of them. No, there's a, I, I don't have them on my laptop. Um, Brad Hughes, if you're able to share the screen to show those. The additional elevations that we provided in the last couple of weeks in response to council, the, the Sandtown community's. Requests. I don't have those on my laptop.
Yeah, they had the modern farmhouse designs.
Yes, and the, and the.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, more brick and then also stone, additional stone.
If you can start at the top, they have, she didn't start at the top and just open up, but these are the, these are the elevations that we had at the last. Meeting. Um, and then the last, they have more brick and stone. Uh, and shake. And then the last one is the, the most revised. Uh, one that's not in color, but if you can go back, uh, Marissa to the, and just start at the first page and then go down.
Okay, let's see. So this is the document I received today from Steve. Let's scroll to the right. Do you mean these elevations?
At, at the top, right.
Okay.
So, um, the, again, Sandtown is looking for those elevations. Um, being made available. And so I just want the record to reflect that.
Thank you. So, so that we're all on one accord.
Mm-hmm.
Is it going to be a mixture of these? Or is it going to be mostly the first one?
It's going to be all six of those slots.
Okay. And then this slide. And so then the, so then the people that are purchasing the townhomes have the option to choose. Which elevation they would like to have. Is that what's happening?
That, let me see. Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
So I move that, um, we approve. One hundred and forty four town halls with additional elevations being offered. To, to homeowners or individuals who are purchasing a lot. That the amenity area include a, the clubhouse and the pool. As well as the additional off-site visitors parking.
All right, it's been properly moved and seconded. We're going to have discussion. Um, I, I actually wanted to ask. A couple of questions. These, these houses all seem to these. These units all seem to be, there's no staggered setback between them is what I'm asking. I know that there are multiple units in a row, but are all the rows on the same?
Our zoning ordinance requires stagger setbacks.
All right, so I'm just not, I just didn't see it in the elevations.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, that's just, the elevations tend to look two dimensional, like a cruise ship or something. And that's, we've spent a lot of time with the community. Sort of breaking them out individually, but, but the, the code requires that.
And then this is a larger question for, uh, Mr. Hyman and I guess possibly Mr. McClendon. We have a couple of these communities in our city. That were begun or approved under Fulton County. And now we're being finished, uh, you know, finished now that we're a city, sometimes by the same developer, sometimes by different developers. What is our obligation as a city? To follow any. Designs or infrastructures or approvals that were done at this point. At five years ago or more by Fulton County. Are we obligated in any way, uh, to. Continue whatever was started under Fulton County in these developments?
May I let Mr. McClendon address that?
Thank you. This is Regent McClendon, Assistant City Attorney. That's really a fact-specific question that we would have to ask ourselves. Uh, for each particular project, um. And, and we would have to determine whether or not, uh, the developer has, uh, acquired vested rights. In the previous approvals coming from Fulton County, uh, that we would have to honor, um, eh, here in the city of South Fulton.
Okay, thank you. Uh, the first hand I saw was Councilwoman Williams.
Yes, thank you. Um, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to. Ask this, ask a question and I apologize if it was said and I missed it. Um, but are there any sort of amenities for kids? I know I heard a pool and a cabana and maybe some other things. So if, if this is a redundant question, I apologize. I just wanted. To make sure I heard all the amenities correctly.
I, I can a- answer that if, if that's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Yeah, the, the, there's, there's, in addition to the clubhouse and the pool, there will be, uh, playgrounds around in that same amenity area. Um, I think, and Brad, correct me if I'm wrong, you were thinking two separate. Maybe even three separate little play areas instead of one large playground, separate play areas. But that's, that's what the proposal is.
Yes, sir. Along with, you know, mul- you know, multiple little dog parks, uh, throughout. But yes, sir, they'll have, uh. Several different little, uh, play areas, uh, uh, as well.
But they're congregated at the amenity.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. And could you give me an idea of how big is the pool? If, if you are going to do a hundred and forty six, um, townhomes, how many, how many? I'm assuming one pool, but how many people can use the pool at one time?
That's a great question. I don't know the size of the pool. I know the size of the clubhouse is about eleven hundred square feet. Um, but in terms of the pool, I'm not sure I measured that. Brad, do you have a, a sense of the square footage of the, the pool? How long it is and wide?
Uh, one second. Yes, sir. So it's roughly, um. Will be about eighty by, um, seventy, seventy feet. Um, and that includes the, uh, concrete decking around the pool as well. It's a little over, right, you know, around twenty one hundred, uh, square feet is the actual, uh. The pool size of the water. And then you have the, the decking around it.
Okay. Thank you very much for that answer. I appreciate it.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, I will recognize Councilman Sebastian. You're on mute, sir. Are you having problems unmuting yourself, Mr. Sebastian?
Oh, no, I'm, I, I didn't. I wasn't hearing anything. I think my internet went out for a few seconds. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, a point of clarification for me. Um, I noticed all the different elevation and. The question was asked if citizens were going to be able to choose the, or buyers won't be able to choose the elevation that they wanted. I'm as, I, I, again, I'm assuming that w- w- we're not going to be building these different elevations like. Next to each other, that there might be sections of these elevations available. And, and not, you know, one person choose lot one. And have one elevation and another person chose lot two and say, I want that elevation instead. But you're going to have sections of the community with the various elevations that people can choose from.
I'm going to kick it to Brad because I don't want to misspeak. Brad, do you, I think I know the answer, but Brad, could you respond to that?
Yes, sir. Uh, Councilman, you're correct. There'll be different, you know, sections. Um, within the development where there'll be, you know, multiple different, uh, elevations. So there'll be sections. Uh, will there be more, you know, brick elevation sections, will there be more submissive siding, uh, with multiple different, you know, color schemes? And all that. So it'll break up, um, you know, the color schemes and the streetscapes. And make it a whole lot more attractive than just the same, you know, thing down every, every road and each building, the exact same.
Thank you. Uh, uh, final question for me yet, because it sounds as if what the answer you gave before that they could have been next to each other. Which, uh, for me didn't make much sense. Um, the other question is, I, I don't know if it was mentioned, but what is the price point of these units? What's, what's the range?
They'll start in the low three hundreds and go up from there.
We'll, we'll forget the top. Any idea?
Uh, you know, if they're, you know, as you know, this market is, you know, crazy right now. Uh, and it's a never-changing, uh, market with, uh, prices of material and, uh, subs and labor and all that. So it's, it's changing literally. Weekly and monthly. Um, but I would say, you know, if we had everything developed and, uh, ready to go today, we'd probably. You know, start out at, you know, three twenty five, three thirty five and, uh, go up from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, any other folks in the queue? One wants going twice. I'm going to ask, uh, uh, or, or just make one follow-up comment. It, it is the purview of, uh, the council. To vote and certainly I will always yield to. Uh, the council person whose district it sits in. But on, on this matter of pools. Uh, had, have you thought about whether the pool is a chlorine pool or a saltwater pool?
No, sir. No, sir, not yet. We have not.
So again, I, 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 I yield, uh, to, to the council person. I, I think it's nice when possible, uh, just something for. Um, all of you to consider as we're building communities that do have pools, though saltwater. Can, saltwater pools can be more expensive to install. Their maintenance can be cheaper in the long run and. Can saltwater pools can be more expensive to install, their maintenance can be cheaper in the long run and. Uh they're just better for your skin, as someone who is an avid swimmer, uh they're they're just better for your skin and it's it's a nice selling feature. Alright, uh so do we want to carry this motion, will you just restate the motion, uh Mr. Clerk?
Yeah, actu- actually, Mr. Mayor, yeah, we for items uh requiring uh action, either approval or denial. We don't hear these items for vote until the regular meeting, uh this is supposed to be public hearing for these items.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Rau, you're absolutely right, uh so we will sound the next item.
And just for the record, uh Ms. Jackson, that item was M twenty-one dash zero zero seven and C V twenty-one dash zero zero seven.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So the next item. Is item four, U twenty-one dash zero zero seven. Request for a special use permit for cosmetology service suites located at seventy-five eighty Spring Box Drive. Located in District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. So this item is for cosmetology suites. Um you know, based on the zoning code adopted by council in December of twenty twenty. Special personal care services such as hair salons, barber shops, nail salons are required to get special use permits in order to operate. So the applicant would like to apply for a new business license for cosmetology suites. She's offering a variety of services including hair salon services, nail salons, makeup services, eyebrow services. Um lash services, facials and waxing. Um the site is currently zoned M I X, which is mixed use and the future land use is local live work. And so the proposal is in compliance with both the zoning and the future land use plan. And staff recommendation on this one is going to be conditions. And the conditions will say something along the lines of. The the application is approved for to limit services to cos- cosmetology services such as hair salons, nail salons, makeup. Eyebrows, lashes, facials, waxing and barber shop, and I think it's important to note that. The business model for this applicant is to have salon suites and so you walk into the building. And you know, there's a receptionist area where your stylist greets you and then you go to their own private suite. Rather than having like an open shop or salon model, can we scroll up, please, Mr. Clerk? So here is the, oh, so this is where the site is located. Is that the intersection of Campbellton Fairburn Road and Butner Road? Next slide, please. And so on the left is the future land use map, you can see the future land use is local live work. And then on the next page is the zoning map and you can see that it's all mixed in. And then again, here is the, this is an image of the floor plan, so you can see how the site is organized with the suites. And that concludes my presentation.
Alright, uh we will. Open up for public comment. For and against?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, before uh recognizing the applicant, I just would like to let you and the council know that we did not receive any. Uh comments in support or in opposition to this case.
Alright. We'll 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 go ahead and hear from the applicant.
Ms. Hightower, are you on the call?
Hi, yes, good evening, happy new year, everyone. If I can share my screen, I just have a really brief um. Presentations, not moving. Okay. Alright, so um Marissa did an excellent job, of course, um just giving you guys the general overview of. What Bella May Salon Studios will be, um which is professional salon studios, of course, in the heart of South Fulton. Um. Can I move this out the way here? And as she stated earlier, will it would be comprised of seven salon studios and suites will be providing hair and nail and beauty services. Um it's we're located at the Shops at Hampton Oaks. And um she already showed you guys the floor plan and exactly how everything will be laid out. Um our business structure will be comprised of licensed independent contractors and employees to meet the needs of our patrons who are coming to visit. And this is just a overview of the services that we will be providing, um during the last meeting, we kinda had to um. Iron out exactly what cosmetology services uh are included under that umbrella. And so basically, um just boiling it down to hair, nails, um and esthetician services, um I also sent Marissa. A formal description from the Georgia State Board of Cosmetology that just showed all of the cosmetology services that are. Um or that can be performed under that cosmetology umbrella. Um our operating hours are Sunday through Monday by appointment and Tuesday through Saturday nine to seven. And this is our contact information and I am open to any questions, comments, concerns.
Alright, I will open it up for discussion, I'm gonna start.
Mr. Mayor. You you wanna close the uh public comment before you go to the council?
Yes, I will close the public comment, um. I'm gonna open this up for discussion, I do wanna start with the councilperson in whom's district this sits. Which is. Councilman Sebastian.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um Ms. Hightower, I'm pleased to meet you, we've never had the pleasure of meeting, but. Uh based on what I've seen and from my knowledge of the area, I don't think we have any um business like yours in the immediate area to want. You know, any um any issues, so I'll just keep it short and say I I would move for this to be approved with the conditions that staff outlined.
Councilman Sebastian, uh you can hold your uh vote, we won't be voting on this until the regular meeting in two weeks, this is for public hearing only.
Thank you, sir.
Uh I I I have a uh. I have a question, the conditions. Um did we limit the uses that this the of people that could be in this space? In those conditions?
Um yes, oh, is that was that for me? Okay, yes, um I believe um there was a bit of a concern, I guess, in terms of what type of uh services, they were concerned with like. Tattooing and um I guess invasive services, but we will not be doing any of those micro abrasion and. Um different services of that nature.
I'm sorry, and that was for uh Ms. Miller, uh the the conditions, the what were the, can you just go over those conditions one more time, I'm sorry?
Was that a question for me, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay, yes, sir, so the conditions will say something, the conditions will say that. The the request is approved. To provide salon suites for licensed cosmetologists. For services to include hair salon services, nail salon services, makeup artist services. Facial services, eyebrow services, waxing services, lash services and barber shop services.
Thank you, and those conditions uh transfer with the ownership, should this transfer?
No, sir, the zoning conditions go with the land and so those zoning conditions will go with the location. So this address, I'm gonna remind myself of the address, so the address seven five eight zero Spring Box Drive. Sweets two fifty and two sixty will be allowed for the services mentioned. Until a future council or someone else comes back and decides that that address in particular. Will be changed via a zoning resolution like we're doing right now.
Thank you, I just I just wanted to to ensure that, I'm sure that uh Ms. Hightower, you will keep the highest standards. Uh but I do just wanna make sure that um should the property change hands, I know that some. Sometimes people eager to fill up spaces will start inviting different kind of folks in and we end up with a little mini flea market. Uh that's great to to know, alright, I'm going to close this. Session, is that correct, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, we are at the last item on the agenda, which is executive session.
Well, actually, be- before that, I did um make a promise, I do want to. Uh hear from members of council, so I wanna give everyone two minutes to. If there's anything that you're doing for King Weekend or people should know about uh coming up, I'm going to go ahead and start with. Uh Dr. Rau.
Thank you for that, on Saturday, uh January fifteenth. In partnership with the Southeast Trust for Parks and Land, we'll continue to work on the Hamilton Nature Preserve, starting at ten o'clock, we'll be. Um looking for volunteers, so if you're interested, you can go to my Facebook page and follow the link. To participate in that King Day of Service. In addition, on Monday, January seventeenth, in partnership with the Cascade Business Merchants Association, we'll do our annual. M L K cleanup along the M L K corridor, um and all are welcome. And that also is from ten to twelve, we'll meet at the um Cascade Driving Range, which is our uh. Usual location and for the event on uh Saturday, uh we will um you can park. Next to Arden's Garden and then walk to um the park, which is again right behind the new Publix.
Awesome, alright, uh Councilman Gums, District Two.
Uh yeah, we have quite a bit of activities, um first starting off on the fourteenth, we will be having our. Public safety uh is similar to a coffee with the cop on uh January fourteenth from nine AM to ten thirty uh AM. At the Fresh from Earth Earth Tea Bar, that's right there in the shopping center next to Saint James Live. Um so we will have our public safety officers there, so I'm encouraging residents if they are working from home. Or on their way out to work, maybe they can stop by, meet some of our community officers. Um continuing to promote community engagement um and community policing. Also too, um in support of M L K activities, we will be uh assisting. As Stonewall Hotel Elementary with their beautification day, they will be building a tiny library at the school. So we're asking um volunteers, parents, um and volunteers that come out and assist will be there on the seventeenth. From nine AM until twelve PM, um so we're hoping that we get a lot of volunteers for that, of course, with the tiny. Uh library initiative, we wanna encourage and promote uh reading levels. And then also too, there are a few other uh day of service activities that will be taking place. Um again, with Wolf Creek Elementary, uh which is not in my district, but also to um a lot of our. Divine Nine will be out assisting and then also to um Renaissance and. Um Evelyn D. West, so those are some activities um for M L K that we all are doing in partnership. With uh board member Francesca Warren, um the South Fulton Parents for Education and the City of South Fulton Professional Purse.
Alright, uh District Three, the place to be, uh Mayor Pro Temp Willis.
Good evening, everyone, I would like to remind everyone that today starts National Human Sex Trafficking Awareness Day. Um we need to make sure that we are aware of what's happening around human sex trafficking. Um and I will be participating on a panel with East Point Delta Sigma Theta. Um they will be giving a workshop on November fifteenth, so I will make sure that information um gets out to you. Um also, I would like to remind everyone that there will be a uh citywide Parks and Recreation Cultural Affairs Master Plan. Information Open House Session on January twenty-ninth, twenty-second from nine until five. Um if you have an interest on developing or improving our Park and Recreation Center. Uh our Park and Recreation Services, please come out and participate in this master plan process. Um I will be partnering with Dr. Talbert. On a M L K event, but I'm not going to announce it, we uh prefer for that event to be random. Um but I am, because we don't want to incite a large crowd, Omicron is still alive. And um and it's still in um it is still uh impacting people, so I will encourage. Uh yes, we do want to celebrate Martin Luther King and we wanna set up celebrate his memory and his legacy. But most of all, we wanna be here to continue to celebrate his legacy and uh what he stood for. So please be cognizant of uh large gatherings, make sure you're wearing your mask. And I'm just make sure that you're safe, because I'm sure that he will want us here to continue to celebrate his lega- legacy. Thank you.
Alright, and District Four.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, um for for District Four, this Saturday, we'll be having a community cleanup. And we're gonna be meeting at six thousand Lindmark Way, that's the Plaza at Citigo Road and South Fulton Parkway. Opposite um the Mustard Seed Barbecue, that's gonna start from ten AM in the morning and we're gonna be cleaning that plaza as well as. One of the hotspots in District Four, Citigo Road between South Fulton Parkway and Rivertown Road. We also partner with Keep South Fulton Beautiful and that day, if you stiff, you still have residents that have their live Christmas trees and they wanna recycle those. They're gonna be able to bring them by and we're gonna transport them to get um to get shredded, alright, so that's all for now from District Four.
Alright, and District Five, Councilman Reeves.
Uh well, first I do wanna say congratulations to Georgia, winning the championship after forty years. I'm just saying, like, you know, uh that was helping in the room there, but however, um. Well, this weekend, we're going to be uh in day of service, um along with the mayor, is uh gonna be what out with the cleanup, that's on M L K Day. Uh Saturday, uh we'll be on Old National and uh in Biscayne. And so uh then we're gonna be going up flat shows, uh just to do some sightseeing and. Uh pretty much, and we have some upcoming classes, we got a senior CPR, we have our senior connect classes. Uh where we, you you need, you know any senior who needs to get uh digitally digitally connected. Uh whether they use their new smartphone, uh their camera device, uh or any new device that they got electronically. Uh we have a senior connect class and um senior CPR, and so uh that's all I have right now.
Sorry, I muted, District Six, Councilwoman Williams.
Yes, um yes, thank you, Mayor, um while I do not personally have anything. For District Six specifically, um I would like to remind residents that this weekend during the. M L King Weekend of Service, um Hands on Atlanta will be doing a number of events, one of them, which is the M L K Sunday Supper. On the sixteenth and I would like to encourage, if you have, if you have not attended that and been a part of that, it really is a. Wonderful event and certainly would hope that people would take advantage of that opportunity.
Awesome, awesome, and last but not least, District Seven, Dr. Baker. Is Dr. Baker with us? Going once, going twice, I feel like as soon as we move on, Dr. Baker. Going once, going twice. I feel like as soon as we move on, Dr. Baker is gonna, is gonna pop back in.
I didn't, actually, I do not see him in the meeting.
Okay. All right, so, uh, I, I will last but not least say, uh, I, uh, will be with, uh, Mr. Reeves and hopefully also Dr. Baker. Um, knocking doors in Camelot. All of council is welcome to come. We're going to meet all three hundred, uh, residents. Well, all the residents in all three hundred units in this community will be gathering here at Camelot, uh, at two PM on Monday, May seventeenth. That will be our day of service. We'll be introducing ourselves to all the residents and making sure that they all know about this wonderful city of South Fulton. Uh, you can sign up for that to volunteer at KhalidCares.com. And with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session. And I also want to thank, thank all of you, um, before, before that, thank everyone watching who stayed with us, uh, for, uh, both of these meetings and bared with me as I, I, uh, went through these agendas for our first, uh, my first meetings as mayor, uh, doing a work session and a, um, zoning hearing. So thank you all so much. And with that-
Mr. Mayor? First, first of all, I want, you said May seventeen. Want to make sure you meant January seventeen?
Yes, January seventeen. Sorry about that. Yes.
And, 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 uh, if I may, uh, Councilmember Baker, um, sent me a text and he wants, uh, citizens to visit, uh, dadsonduty.com, a, um, organization that he's working with, uh, this month. Dadsonduty.com.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And with that, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I move that we go, we re- we go into executive session for real estate personnel and litigation.
Second.
All right, Mr. Clerk. All right, any discussion? Mr. Clerk, will you go ahead and sound the vote?
Let's roll call vote to go into executive session, the recess. Uh, Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
And Councilmember Baker? Mr. Baker had just come in. That motion is approved. We are reset for executive session at seven fifty-one PM.
I'd like to make a motion to reconvene. I will entertain a motion to reconvene.
Second.
I move that we adjourn.
Mr. Clerk, do you call the vote?
I'm sorry.
Hello, Council, Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
We're reconvened at nine eighteen PM.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
One second. I haven't called for the motion. Um, I did just want to say it's nine o'clock. I think that this is a good time. Let's really shoot for this entire year. We're going to try and make this, uh, the end time for our meetings for the benefit of ourselves and our staff. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, any discussion? Hearing, uh, Mr. Adams, would you please call the-
Roll call, vote to adjourn. Councilmember Ral?
Yes.
Councilmember Gums?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Willis?
Yes.
Councilmember Sebastian?
Yes.
Councilmember Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Baker?
Aye.
We are adjourned at nine nineteen PM. Thank you very much.
Night, everyone. South Fulton forever.